...to three minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. Speakers should state their name and address for the record and must direct their comments to the council, not to the audience or press. While the meeting is in session, members of the council, city, staff, and members of the audience are expected to maintain order and decorum and to obey the order of the mayor. Any meeting participants or member of the audience who engages in disorderly conduct, such as hand clapping, stamping of feet, whistling, using profane language, and so on, which disturbs the peace and good order of the meeting, or refuses to comply with the lawful orders of the mayor, may be ordered removal from the meeting and may be guilty of admisdemeanor. Roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem Blatz?
Here.
Councilmember Clapp?
Present.
Councilmember Wirick?
Present.
Councilmember Haney?
Here.
Mayor Laura?
Here. And may Councilmember Haney lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a card from Lanny Clave, and it doesn't specify if it's on public agenda or a public comment or on the agenda that's presented today. Anybody? Lanny Clave Clifford? No? Not here?
I'm Lanny Cofford, but I'm not Lanny Clave.
Oh, sorry about the Cofford. Are you wanting to speak on the item on today's agenda or a public comment?
On the agenda.
Okay, perfect. Moving on to public comment, Mr. Larry Wild?
Yes. It's item one.
Oh, is it on?
I think I'm on the agenda one for the end.
Okay, sorry, I couldn't read the note. Mr. William Ulrich?
Good evening, and happy holidays. William Ulrich, 487 Gridley Road, and I, since we usually don't have this many suits in the audience, I will be brief in my comments. Number one, this pertains to city reports and memos deemed confidential in anticipation of litigation. I have a question regarding transparency. Who makes this determination, as in a city reporter memo, city manager, from city attorney that's deemed confidential in anticipation of litigation? Who makes it? How long does it last? That is, when are the documents released for public review? What is the release mechanism for transparency purposes? This is not a national security or official secrets act situation. B, what is the nature and source of anticipated litigation? That is, if the city is anticipating suing or being sued, does not the community need to have some degree of transparency and notice and awareness of that? C, who is responsible, specifically what individual in the city government is responsible for eventual public disclosure? Does it ever happen? Should it not be incumbent upon the public to know when to ask? It should not, excuse me, be incumbent upon the public to know when to ask for disclosure or release of these documents. Now, D, how many city documents remain confidential in anticipation of litigation and were never released at this time and do they need to remain thus? My second item, which I will try to execute here in the next minute and thirty seconds, is a letter that I'd like to, since you already have one in the record, I would like to read into the record. And it's not related to the agenda item, but rather it's related to the OBGMA, Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency meetings, and the aquifer reports to the city. Gentlemen, please be advised that pursuant to my review of the Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency meeting minutes of the following. Councilmember Betsy Clapp has failed to attend six, that is, six, OBGMA board meetings as between September 27, 2013, and October 30, 2014, out of eleven meetings. Since Ms. Clapp is both an appointee by state law as a member of the Ojai City Council, one member of the OBGMA board must be a representative of the city of Ojai, as well as the appointed Ojai City Council liaison to the OBGMA. Ms. Clapp's failure to attend fifty-four percent of the OBGMA meetings during this period would appear to present a dereliction of her duties to the Ojai City Council, as well as to the voters who elected her, and the citizens and taxpayers to whom she owes a duty of performance, if for no other reason than her acceptance of the value of the benefits that she receives as a city councilperson. Please note that I am not aware of Ms. Clapp having made any OBGMA or Ojai Basin aquifer status reports to the Ojai City Council or the Ojai public community during this time period. Since Ms. Clapp has had in the past an issue with excessive absenteeism on the part of members of Ojai City Commissions, resulting, as I understand, in the dismissal of sitting commission members, perhaps it is appropriate that Ms. Clapp is subject to the application of the same policy for what appears to be an even more egregious case of absenteeism regarding perhaps a more significant level of responsibility and accountability to the citizens. Thank you.
And Mr. Clark, if you don't mind getting him back to the procedures on closed session to Mr. Ulrich, so he's aware of how that comes through the council's attention. Thank you. Mr. Daddy?
Good evening. I was notified by one of my neighbors that we're going to have a community outreach meeting January 12 concerning the community home that happens to be next door to me. I find a conduct of this body less than adequate. We have a meeting that is scheduled January 12 at 10:30 a.m., and who do they think is going to attend since it's for the neighborhood when more than half of the people are going to be at work? Whose convenience is this for? And we've had somebody come in that's got at least fifteen violations, has worked through work orders, has worked till two plus in the morning on Friday evening till the police had to shut them down, worked on the weekend in violation of our ordinances. We have a business that is run with a corporate consciousness of deceit, and we're going ahead, and we're making allocations for them to have meetings when they know the community and the neighborhood can't show up to have a community meeting. That's outrageous, and I'm ashamed that this council would condone that type of protection or lack of protection for this community. This does clearly not meet Ojai community standards. We have had issue after issue after issue, and if you look behind me, you'll see we have another council that's full. When we have a full council, it tells me we have a failure to adequately protect the residents or the residents wouldn't be here, asking for protection individually. This thing has been broken for quite a while. I think what you need to do is you need to convene and come up with a different solution because what you've been doing consistently has consistently been broken and has consistently not worked. Doesn't matter what the issues are, they're all over the place, but this has got to stop sooner or later. And I appeal to you folks, take a look at this thing, take a look and see why the people are here, take a look at what's going on. And I know that it was difficult last year, and there were many different personalities, and there were different issues, but we're not getting equal protection, we're not getting equal rules, we're not getting equal answers, we're not getting equal enforcement for the same rules and ordinances in this community. And I would ask you to go back and find out why that isn't happening and start making that happen. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Wirick?
I would like to speak, ask Mr. Clark about the 10:30 matter. I believe this is something, an initiative from DSS.
That's correct.
And I think the 10:30 issue, about the 10:30 time is, on a weekday, is an appropriate question to ask, whether or not they can, do you think they have the flexibility to schedule that at a more reasonable time for work, for people that work normal hours?
I don't know, but I can certainly ask.
I think that's a really good point, and also the issue of, I assume this will be put on the city calendar, our publicly distributed information on this when it is solidified?
We can. I think the intent of, excuse me, I think the intent of DSS is to have a dialogue with the neighbors within about five hundred feet of the site, so it wasn't, I think, intended by them to be a citywide meeting.
And then the standard notification of the neighbors, five hundred feet?
That's what we discussed with them, yes.
Okay. But I do think the 10:30 point's extremely important.
Yeah, Mr. Daddy?
If the people next door can work till two o'clock in the morning on Friday night, I'm certain that they can meet us other than 10:30, which is an inconvenience on us. Again, as far as the notification, I didn't get notification. I'm the next house, right next door. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Daddy, and we will follow up and also work with DSS.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Clark, I'm a little confused. They're requesting a meeting with the neighbors to discuss what's going on, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Then why are we even involved in it?
They ask us, because they don't have direct contact with the neighbors, so they asked us to help them set up the meeting and provide a place for it.
All right, and if we're going to assist them in setting up the meeting, why don't we dictate the time that we think the meeting should take place and insist on it, not ask them if it's okay? And secondly, what's wrong with the entire public being there? This has an effect on our community. I know it's effective on the neighbors, but as a city, if we're going to be involved in it, everybody within the city should be invited to attend.
Anybody else on the council have a question?
Yes, I would have to agree, because this is not going to be an isolated incident, because this is going to happen again in the community, because this is becoming kind of a standard statewide, and I think it would be a really good idea to have it open to the public. I think people are curious, they want to know, they want to know how it's going to impact their community, and they want to educate themselves, so I would have to agree that we should have it open to the public and that it should be at our discretion on the time, because again, if we're being gracious enough to offer our staff time, the taxpayer dollars, to help facilitate this meeting, I certainly think that we have the, it's well within our rights to insist that it be in a time which is outside of regular business hours, working hours for the public.
And Mr. Haney, or Councilmember Haney?
Yeah, just briefly, I think it might be a better way to do it is to have DT, does it D, D S?
State Department of Social Services.
Why don't they come in and do a presentation here versus turning an event in a small neighborhood into a circus? That's what my gut says. I think the public needs to be educated on it. I just don't know if that's the forum to educate them on or educate them in. I'd just like to see them come here and do a presentation as to how these houses are authorized in communities, the pros and cons of them being in our communities. I just think being here would be a better forum than being there. I think that's a community gathering, that they're trying to smooth some really hard feelings right now, and I think that there's an opportunity there for them to come together and figure out how to work together versus work against each other. And turning it into a public forum, I don't think that's going to present the right opportunity. So that's just my take.
And I just want to remind the council, this is not an agendaized item, so we can't get really into the bolts and details of it, but I want to make sure we move on and that there is at least consensus that we need to do better outreach and work with DSS and provide information to the public.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think it'd be good to give direction to staff, because I think Councilman Haney has a good point, that there's maybe two issues here. One is the neighborhood, and neighborhood getting together to solve their, the ill feelings within the neighborhood, and the public education. And I would have to agree with Councilman Haney, so I think it's highly, it's appropriate to give direction to staff on whether we do want to have that occur or not.
And that's a valid request, but I just would like to turn it back to the city attorney.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I may, there's not an agenda item, so I think it would be not appropriate for the council to take an action as a body to give direction. I think the manager has heard loud and clear the feelings from unusual council members and what the community said, and you can ask him to act appropriately, you can agendize a further discussion, another meeting, but taking an action this evening to give direction, I think, is outside the Brown Act.
Well, moving on, Mr. Miley?
Bill Miley, North Signal Street. I would like to make some comments about what Mr. Daddy raised. That's a group home, I understand, six or less individuals who are not related. We have in our city code sections that deal with group homes, group homes, and refers to the Health and Safety Code, State of California, with no specific sections or portions to look at, the whole code. I've looked at that. I have some experience, no, I have some comments from a friend who ran, used to run alcohol treatment, alcohol group homes in the city of Ojai, and he told me that as long as you have six or less and no programs on site, no treatment programs, no group meetings, you can get away with it. But if you have treatment programs, then you have to have conditional use permits by the city and approval by state agencies, like the Department of Social Services, I guess. So I think the city has very direct responsibility for what's going on on Quail Oaks Drive. This is a group home, which apparently it's not, and if it's not going to be a group home, it has to have a conditional use permit before it's allowed to function. And why is not that happening? If it's a group home, it can't really function as a group home, in my opinion, because they're adolescents and they have to have full-time supervision, which makes it seven people in the house, and that has to come to the city for a conditional use permit. So I think, based on maybe lack of some information as to what's going on, I think our community planning department, through their code enforcement, needs to really get on top of this and stop it until we know what it is. So we need to be proactive right now, and I don't see that happening, and I think that's not good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to talk on agendaized items? No? All right, moving along to our public hearing, and this public hearing is an appeal of the Historical Preservation Commission actions denying work permit, WP 14-01, for the renovation of the historical landmark number nine, and the appeal of the Planning Commission's action denying design review permit, DRP 14-18, NEF Lounge, Ojai Valley Inn and Spa, 905 Country Club Road. And I just want to state that before we begin this appeal process, we're going to start off with the Ojai Valley Inn giving their, or with the staff report, and then Ojai Valley Inn giving their presentation, we will move on to questions that any of the council members have, then we will go to the public, and since it's an appeal meeting, I do want to stress that I want to make sure that we do hear everybody's comment, and I do want to stress that it'd be great that if somebody before you says something that you agree with, just state that you agree with them. But I do also want to offer the flexibility of giving you enough time to report to us your concerns and your issues and anything that you brought to this body. So, and I turn it over to Staff, yeah, Councilmember Blatz?
Just before the staff report, if I could ask Mr. Mayor a question of Mr. Fletcher. Mr. Fletcher, this is a hearing that's come before us as a complete de novo hearing.
That's correct.
And my question is twofold. Being completely de novo, how much information are we allowed to utilize in our deliberation that doesn't come before us tonight? And secondly, how much of the prior commission's actions, such as the Historic Preservation Commission or the Planning Commission, are we allowed to take into consideration when looking at the decision that we're going to be making tonight?
In terms of what you can rely upon, your decision must be based upon evidence that is submitted here at the hearing, whether it's in the staff report, written submittals, the boards, pictures, and of course, testimony from the public. If the council members relying, if any of you are relying upon information you've received outside the meeting, it's critical that you states on the record that whether you and the former planning commissioners, you know, you made it, if you made a site visit and saw something, if that would be the case, put, state what you saw, what you heard. If you had any meetings with anybody, members of the public or the applicant, state what you, whether you had the meeting, based what information you obtained, particularly if that is information that didn't come out here in the hearing. In terms of the, relying upon what the historic resource, the Historic Preservation Commission did or the Planning Commission did, as long as it submitted as evidence, you know, we don't even, we don't have minutes yet of those meetings, but to the extent you have asked questions of the staff or members of the public speak as to what transpired and what may have been in the minds or articulated, I don't know what was in the minds, what was articulated by members of those bodies, you can rely upon it as some evidence. But you're going to make your own, this council will make its own independent judgment based on the evidence it gets this evening to make the decision. It's not just reviewing what was decided below, but basically it's if the application was newly filed and before you now. But you can rely on anything that's relevant, you can rely upon as long as it's in the record.
So my question is, is this specifically to me, and I don't think it pertains to any of the other council members, during this quarter, I've been the liaison to the Planning Commission. So for the special meeting that was had, which was a joint meeting between the Planning Commission and the Historic Preservation Commission, I attended that meeting as the liaison to the Planning Commission. I heard the testimony that was presented by both the applicant and the comments of the people on the Historic Preservation Commission. I believe I was the only one of the council members there. I can rely on what I heard during that session in my thought process and deliberations?
As long, I think you need to verbally state on the record what it is that you heard so that everyone else gets the same information you have.
Okay, thank you.
Staff report?
Ms. Wolf?
So thank you, Ms. Wolf's going to be making the presentation tonight, but I also wanted to introduce Diana Gould, who is part of our staff as a contract planner, who will be assisting Ms. Wolf.
All right, good evening. I'm going to try to walk you through this report, because there's a lot of material, and I apologize for all the material put in front of you tonight at the last minute, but we had some clarifications, a lot of communications come in at the last minute. And with that, I'll start off with, as you know, before you tonight is a work permit and a design review permit to make alterations and renovations to the Ojai Valley Inn, which includes in their project an alteration to the city of Ojai's landmark number nine, the NEF Lounge. A public hearing was held on December 11, 2014, at which time the Historic Preservation Commission made findings that approval of the work permit would detrimentally and irreversely affect a historic landmark. Thus, the work permit number 14-01 was denied. In addition, the Planning Commission took action to approve DRP 14-18, subject to a condition that was added, that no renovation work be undertaken on the NEF Lounge. Subsequent to these actions, on December 16, 2014, the applicant filed a timely appeal of both the HPC and the PC's decisions. In his appeal, the applicant states that the work proposed for the NEF Lounge does not materially affect any element of this lounge identified in the findings that were utilized to determine the landmark status of the lounge. As such, they contend that the proposed alterations will not affect the building's landmark status. Therefore, the applicant has requested approval of a work permit to allow the removal of the interior wall between the NEF Lounge and the South Portico. In addition, the applicant has requested that a revised design review permit be issued for this renovation. The design review permit issued by the commission at the December 11, 2014, was conditioned to prohibit renovations to the NEF Lounge, therefore, they're requesting that this condition be removed. The council tonight will be taking action on both the appeal, the work permit application, and revised design review permit. We have combined these permits in one staff report with all the attachments in one public hearing tonight for convenience sake and to make this process a little bit more seamless. However, you will be taking action on two separate resolutions, approval or denial, or action on the resolution for the work permit and action on the resolution for the design review permit. Staff has given you in your packet tonight all the materials that went to Planning Commission and all the materials for Historic Preservation Commission, that's supplement to your staff report tonight. We, as stated previously, minutes were not available for those meetings to include in your packet. So I thought I'd just move on to the background. You knew, staff tried to give you a little background on how this became landmarked, and back in 2002, the inn proposed a large remodel that required an EIR, and in the IR, they identified the following mitigation measure, which required the inn to apply for landmark status. And that was because the NEF parapente segments of the hacienda building are considered eligible as a City of Ojai landmark, the existing draft nomination form shall be completed by the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa and submitted to the Ojai Historic Preservation Commission for their action prior to the issuance of building permits, and the applicant shall provide assurance for the completion of work in a manner satisfactory to the city manager. This issue of the EIR was, I think, has become sort of a confusing issue for many in that that information was provided as documentation of how the NEF Lounge became a landmark. It also was provided as documentation as to how cultural resources were evaluated at that time. It was not meant to suggest that this EIR was part of the environmental process for this project. This project is a standalone project and not associated with that other project which had concluded already, so this project is not subject to that environmental impact report. So, moving on, we just wanted to include in the staff report that back in December, or, excuse me, September 11, 2006, the landmark, landmarking of the NEF Lounge came before the HPC Commission for consideration. We provide in this, in the staff report, the documentation in regards to who was there and how it was formed, and we do that just because the applicants have indicated to staff that there was some question about participation on their part of the landmark process, and so staff did a little research to try to determine who was there and what, whether the property owner had notification of this process, and whether or not he had a representative who was there. And so in the staff report here, we kind of just indicate that all the information and research that staff conducted, we weren't able to identify that anybody from the inn was ever at any of these meetings, including when city council eventually adopted the landmark status on the consent calendar. We do note that there is record, there is documentation in the record that shows that there was a public hearing letter sent out to Thad Hyland, who at the time was the general manager. I think that he was the general manager at the time when the project was done in 2002, and I don't know at the time it was landmarked if he still continued to be the general manager. But it was sent out, returned receipt, and there's no receipt in the file, so that's the extent of the research that we could find on how the process really unfolded and what the participation of the applicant, meaning the inn, was in the process. So the code identifies eleven criteria that were used in determining, to terminate a historic landmark designation, and we've provided those for you all through items one through, I guess, nine. I think there were two that weren't applicable, and we do that because... And, um, we do that because these are the things that were identified as being historic from the NEF Lounge. And I don't think I need to, um, elaborate on those, they're pretty self-explanatory. Um, and I think that the two that are really important at this point to look at are the wordings of items eight and nine, which is, um, the item was listed to be protected was the exterior of the lounge. And the, um, guidelines established for review of work permits to lounge was that the clubhouse should not be altered further and that the HPC should review any proposed alteration efforts. So I think nine, um, eight is vague because everyone's interpretation of what the exterior walls are is evidently, um, come to light that that's kind of, you know, an item of, of confusion, whether that wall between the NEF Lounge and the portico is actually considered an exterior wall because at one time the portico was outside or an interior lot wall. And then number nine is kind of vague because in one first part of the sentence, it says no alterations, but then it says alterations should go before the HPC. So we just provide that for you so that you kind of know, um, why maybe the applicant sees this different than the HPC sees these guidelines. And, um, so we're, we moved, we, staff provided a little bit of history about other projects and, and just other landmarks that have had alterations done to them. And we just provided this for commercial projects or non-residential, I guess I should say, to give you an idea of what's been allowed in the past. And, um, I think that this goes along with the idea of the flexibility and the use of a commercial building and, and the stat, the allowance to be made for adaptive reuse or flexible use of a commercial building and just providing, um, some background of what's been allowed in the, in the city previously. The applicant's proposal is detailed on page five of eight, and they continue to want to do these four things, which includes, um, these all specifically address the NEF Lounge. I mean, the applicant will be doing their, their PowerPoint for you and talk about all the other issues that were done, that they're going to, that they're proposing through the design review permit. However, this staff report really focuses on those issues that have been controversial, which is the NEF Lounge. And so they continue, um, to request that the tile, they'll be allowed to replace the tile floor in the north portico, um, and in the south. And that with the NEF Lounge, they want to remove windows on the east side and replace them with doors and of course, open up the south wall. So the applicant has indicated that, um, they recognize the significance of the Wallace NEF's work and the importance of Spanish colonial revival architecture in many of the Southern California's historic buildings. They feel that the opening of the south wall is consistent with the building's original design and intended uses. They have a desire to be able to utilize the building space as it was originally intended in an area where guests can transition between the more intimate lounge and the vibrant restaurant By removing the south wall of the NEF Lounge, not only is this consistent with the Inn's architectural style, but it allows a seamless flow of guests from one area to another, making the area more functional while still continuing its original uses, a gathering place for guests. They did provide staff with a phase two, as part of this project, a phase two historical report. And they have, um, done an addendum to that, which also is in your packet. And it states that due to these unclear wording of resolution oh six thirty-eight, which designates the NEF Lounge as historic landmark number nine, the precise boundaries of this landmark are difficult to determine. In addition, this report indicates that substantial renovations have already occurred to the Inn's prior to its designation as a historic landmark, and therefore, the proposed renovations do not appear to significantly impair the property's continual eligibility for designation as a landmark. And I just will point this out that, that, um, there's some, um, when I kind of highlight a key point, which is that under CEQA, the, the wording is, I'm looking for my exhibit here, is very, is very key that it is, has to be a significantly substantially impair, not just impair. So some of this wording is, is important that you realize the magnitude that they're talking about when we're talking about exemptions and damage to historic resources. And so, um, it should also be noted that once the applicant became aware that various historic reports and they, and they received archived plans from, um, I've, some, I'm, I'm not sure where they got them from, but from a library, their original plans, that several elements were either integral to the historic nature of the building or the original uses, the applicant did modify their proposal to retain these features without requesting any, um, modifications. And some of those features include the fireplace, the outside water feature and the original flooring. So the municipal code does provide, um, an additional, um, element for you to consider, and that is the economic hardship considerations. And in, in the report, staff has given you the straight from code, the code section four point eight one seven, which talks about hardships. And we, um, encourage you to take a look at this argument because, um, obviously, I know that you've received a lot of material in your packet, but there was also a letter from the applicant that talked about, you know, the whole, um, original, um, why they initiated this project was because of how they felt they needed to move forward as an Inn, that they had gotten a lot of feedback regarding, um, uh, use of the Inn and its inability to attract large groups, they don't have a large gathering place. And so that's an argument made by the Inn that, um, and as it states, it states in this, in this paragraph, that, that guests have used the Inn and have had to complain that there is no adequate space for their participants to congregate and socialize after hours. And so I think that's something that if there's definitely a letter in your packet from the applicant elaborating on that. And, um, finally, we're getting into the kind of nets and bolts of this, of this review, which is the not, in environmental analysis and the regulations. And in the environmental analysis, I think the real issue, a lot of the, um, most recent correspondence gone for pupils is the, the issue of why a category exemption. And, um, I think that, um, in, on page seven of eight, it's very clear why we think this qualifies for, um, a category exemption. And again, it gets back to the issue of significantly altering part of a historic building that directly, um, was responsible for it being listed as historic element. And so, um, all of the rest of the project, um, is, really does qualify under class one category exemption. We've, you know, we've kind of laid this out, that a category exempt, one exemption is small structures, small demolitions. Um, and I have something here I can actually read to you on that. Oh, she's handing it to me. Ah, great, thanks. So, um, so, so category one exists, consists of operation repair, maintenance permitting, licensing, leasing of minor operations to public or private structures, facilities. And the key part is that involve, involving negligible or no expansion of the use beyond that existing at the time. Okay, and, and clearly, when you see them go through what they're proposing to do tonight, there's nothing that's intensifying or creating additional traffic. This is all basically renovation and modernizing the Inn, very different than the project they did in 2002. So, um, in the case of a class one, um, they were doing renovations to the, to the pool and, um, some demolition, and that is, that is covered under class one, which, which allows demolition and removal of small structures, including swimming pools. It's very specifically called out in class one. Interior partitions and removal of interior walls and all those are listed. And so really, the key point that staff has, has identified for you is whether or not the renovations that they've, that they've identified for the NEF Lounge, whether, because you cannot use a categoric, cata, a category exemption if you find that, um, that those are so significant that they all, like I said before, that they alter the historic nature of, of the building. That's really the issue. Many of the other things that have come up has been regarding the archaeological issues. And staff will once again, as I said during HPC and PC, tell you that the maps, the legitimate maps that are in staff's possession in the, in the community building department do not indicate that this is, that there is a site on this property nor within the threshold that is standard used from, from the city of Ojai. And I don't know when that standard became practice and when it didn't, but it's been used in all of the, the projects that I've had experience with since I've been here, um, looking backwards, you know, looking at some of the ones that I, that I've had to work on. Um, and the pool has been renovated four times and in fact, a monitor, a Chumash monitor was out there the last time for six weeks when that pool was dug up and reinstalled. They found nothing. They never had to call an archaeologist out there. And so what standard, what standard is a threshold for this is you look at the map, every city has one, identifies the sites, it's confidential, it's not given out to the public. You, 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 some cities require that it, the actual site beyond the location, some have a threshold, we've used three hundred feet, a hundred meters. Um, if you had two sites and you had something in the middle and, you know, obviously, then you would make a judgment that it has the potential. In this case, there's, there's nothing in any of the, um, documentation that we have that shows anything that there's any heightened elevation or, or potential for there to be artifacts out there. So that's, that, um, and I guess I just elaborate one more, one more thing on that is that we gave you tonight a decision tree from CEQA because this seems to keep on coming up and I wanted to walk you through that. And we can put it up on the overhead if, um, the need be, I mean, everyone had a hard copy and maybe it's better. Rhonda, can you call that up on the?
What did you want to call it?
The CEQA flow chart? And so you should have it, it should look like this in front of you. And I just wanted, I just wanted, because this has become such a, an issue, wanted to just be very clear on this, that this is the process by where staff makes, when they start their initial environmental review, we ask, and this is common throughout all the state of California, this flow chart exists in every planning department, in every CEQA book. And it says, you know, you first you determinate it a project, and if it's not, you're out. That's it. It doesn't loop back around and say, well, but I want it to be. You just really have a definition and a determination of whether it's a project. Then you ask, is it ministerial? Okay? If it's ministerial, no further action required under CEQA. Okay? Um, so we're down to the part, it is a project, it's not ministerial, it required a discretionary permit. So the next thing, is there a statutory exemption? No, there's not. Okay, so now we're down to a category exemption. Clearly, if it's under class one, if you can say it doesn't significantly alter a, a historic element that'll cause this building to be landmarked. If you can't, then obviously, we can't exempt it under class one. But I cannot, the purpose of showing you this flow chart is that once you make a determination that it's, that it's, fits this category one exemption, that's it, you're done. You can't just say, well, but I would prefer it to have an EIR and loop it back around. It's not how this flow chart works. And so I just wanted, because this question keeps on coming up, well, wouldn't it just be more proactive to have a phase one and a phase two and an EIR done for this? Wouldn't it just ensure that everything's A-OK? And so I just wanted to let you know that this is how the flow chart works. If you make the determination that it has, um, significant impacts to a cultural resource, then we would be over on the other set side of this flow chart, we would be doing an initial study, which would require a phase one and a phase two, if that's what, um, was chosen. Okay, that, I mean, in other words, if that was the element that kicked it out of the, the category exemption. So I hope that provides some clarification because I know that that's been, um, a question out there for a while now at this point. And in the staff report, we also provide you with, um, the regulations regarding a work permit. I think those are also very self-explanatory. And, um, with that, I guess I'll just, um, conclude by saying that, um, staff is recommending approval of the revised development review permit application and the work permit for the renovation of NEF Lounge because the scope of remodeling is substantially less than the original applications, which was denied by the HPC commission and the planning commission and does not alter the exterior of the building. The original landmark process was flawed and did not specify the types of remodeling that could be permitted in the future to encourage reuse and preservation. And it is normal to provide for modification of historic buildings, especially to the interior, to encourage reuse and preservation, as been done with other historic buildings such as Fire Station 21 and the Historic Catholic Church and the Arcade. Staff would also just like to add that, you know, it does really kind of set a precedent too for how people see the landmark process. And, you know, we want to encourage people to landmark, we want to be cognizant and aware of how the landmark status encourages, um, people and whether it becomes a discouraging issue when you're trying to landmark a commercial building and, and you're really agreeing to not ever be able to ever modify a building from that point on into the future. And finally, the remodel is essential to retain group, existing group business and attract new business, which requires a space be provided for groups to mingle after hours. And with that, we just have the following recommendations, that you conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution making the necessary findings and approving the category exemption under class one and making the necessary findings and approving work permit, WP fourteen oh one, subject to conditions listed in the resolution. And, um, adopt a resolution making the necessary findings, approving the category exemption under class one and making the necessary findings and approval, approving the revised design review permit, DRP fourteen eighteen, subject to conditions listed in the resolution, attachment B. I will say that we did make modifications to those two resolutions. We, um, elaborated on the environmental, um, review, um, whereas that section of it, so, um, they're, that was done between the, you receiving this packet and, and tonight. Also, I'd just like to say that in encouraging, um, the historic report has encouraged the Inn, if you were to consider approving this tonight, to do an interpretive plan for them. So people would sit in the NEF Lounge and, and be aware of what it is and its historic, historic nature. And part of that had the timing of doing, having that report done prior to pulling a building permit. And that timing's a little odd, you know, you'd normally do that before CEVO because you're going to let the person do the work and get going on it and then work with, you know, whoever they need to work with, HPC or, or staff, um, and getting approval of this interpreted plan, but they wouldn't be able to occupy before. So we would ask that, that you at least consider making that, that modification to that timing. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Anybody of the council have a question?
A quick question, uh, of Mr. Fletcher. How is it that we can do a de novo hearing when we're going to be hearing something different than the commission heard in, in giving us or giving the applicant the denial? How come that's, how, why isn't this a first impression then that shouldn't be going back to the commission?
Um, as a de novo process, um, you have, let me say it the way, you have the option. If, if, if an application is changed significantly between, um, uh, the original entitlement process and the appeal, such that perhaps the decision of the underlying body would have been significantly different, you have that option. But since the matter is freshly before you, um, the applicant is entitled, can amend the application if they so deem appropriate. Very often, it's done for just to address perhaps, because in this case, it was their own appeal, but very often, it's a, an opponent's appeal. And they try to mitigate some of the issues raised. Again, but since it's de novo before you tonight, it's a new application effectively, uh, procedurally, it's a new, and so therefore, the fact that they make some modifications doesn't affect due process and, um, you have the discretion to go ahead and hear it tonight.
Then I just have one question to staff. Uh, where in our packet does it specifically say, here are the, here are the specific changes that have been made to the, uh, application that are different for us to hear than what has been heard by the HPC?
So, um, the HPC saw the same, maybe that's a little misleading, they, 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 I believe that they saw the same things that you, you're seeing tonight. But in the, um, I have to find it in here, in the phase two that came in, there was unpaid, okay, so let's go to, um, attachment G, page nine of twenty-four. This table in here was also provided to them because while the original, original proposal had these things in it, when it finally ended things in it, when it finally ended up in front of HPC, this table was presented to them on the things that then they changed from the time it was originally submitted to staff before it went to public hearing. And so you can see where it said, very clear, it said, originally they were going to remove the fountain, this is on the north portico, they were going to remove the fountain, now they changed and said, hey, we realize that's, that's, that's significant, so we're going to retain it. And so all these things where it's been changed, where you see the slash, those were the things that they changed once they realized the significance. The only other thing I think that came about kind of at the last minute at HPC was when they, it was a couple of days before the meeting where they got the actual historic architectural drawings. And I think that, that those drawings, in their opinion, show doors where there would have been windows, and I think that maybe they felt that those coming in late in the game, really, they, they sort of were presented very late in the game to HPC. Even though they were presented, it was kind of like how you're getting a lot of the information at late in the, in the game. So I think those two things are the things where you might, they might be a little disagreement.
Yeah. Thank you, I have nothing further.
Chair?
Yes.
I just, I want to just key off of Councilman Blatts' question because I just, I want to be very clear. On page one of eight of the executive summary, it does state, "The scope of remodeling is substantially less than the original applications, which was denied by the Historic Preservation Commission and Planning Commission, and does not alter the exterior of the building." So I, just to be clear of exactly your question, are there changes from what was denied?
I don't think so. I think that that's, I think he's, he's the, you might want to ask the applicant, I don't know of any.
Okay, certainly you could draw that inference from that sentence.
Yeah, I think that's worded, but I think this all happened so quickly that he's, that they realized they made these changes, that they realized the historic nature, it was kind of late in the game, I think that's the issue.
I just wanted to be clear on the same question. Yeah, okay.
Anybody else on the council have questions for staff?
I do have a question. We were providing on, on our correspondence on section I, I think it is one of the last pages, I think it's page, I don't really have a page, but it's a CEQA EIR decision tree. It's four pages before, before it ends, the packet ends. There's a CEQA tree, and then you provided us with this CEQA process flow chart. They're different in the sense of the process that you're supposed to take when looking through projects, whether they're, whether they have to go through a EIR or not. For example, the tree one doesn't include any type of, oh, so it's, is it the same thing or is it not the same?
No, they just, they just took off this top part, this top part where it talks about how you initially look at a project, they, they just eliminated that part. They're down here where it has a significant impact, so they're down here on the part where it says.
Possible significant.
Yeah, they kind of just took it from that part and that whole top part's gone.
Okay. Just for clarity, because it absolutely eliminates the first process of looking at a project, whether or not it's going to, there's going to require EIR, so.
Okay.
Thought that was interesting. And then also, on, in terms of, the way I interpreted that section that Councilman Wierig just referred to as the original project or the original submit on 2002, I felt like that's where the language is, that it's, it was substantially less than what was presented at the Historic Preservation Commission. Would that, could that be a possibility or?
Well, I think he's probably here in the audience tonight, so you may want to reserve that question for the man who, because that's coming out of the historic report. I would maybe ask him.
Okay, all right. Well, could we have the presentation from the Ojai Inn? And I have three, four cards, no, five cards. So is this, should I just go with the order that was given to me or would you guys, gentlemen, like to come up and you guys could speak in your order, just state your name for the public record?
Yes. My name is Craig Martin. I am a outside general counsel to the Crown family, who are the owners of the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa. First of all, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, we appreciate your time tonight. And what I wanted to do to begin is give you a preview of what we intend to do. So my comments are necessarily introductory so that you know what our lineup is, and I can take you through and direct you to the folks that will be talking tonight and, you know, I'll tell you who's going to talk about what and what our main points are. So I, with me, I'll be straight up about this, I'm from a law firm in Chicago called Jenner &amp; Block, and with me is one of my partners, Matt Thomas. He will not be speaking, but I, I'll introduce everyone. After I am done, our first speaker who will give you an overview of all phases of the project, including the NEF Lounge, who'll also cover the pool area, is Dan Klinger, who is the architect on the project. After Dan does his presentation, then Steve Crown, who is obviously from the Crown family, ownership in Chicago, who's traveled out here for the meeting because it's extremely important, extremely important business issue for the family and its investment in the Ojai Inn. So Steve is out here to address many of the business concerns, design concerns and so forth, and it's notable that Steve has been around for a couple of decades. His family has been in the hotel business since, for 75 years since the Hiltons, the ownership in the Hilton Enterprise, and they own two five diamond resorts, both the Ojai Inn and Spa, as well as the Little Nell in Aspen. So Steve is perhaps as knowledgeable as anyone in the hotel industry that you can get. After Steve is done, there will be a short commentary and give you a little bit of history on the pool and the renovations to the pool by Brian Skaggs. Brian is the head engineer at the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa. Then let me just introduce some other folks who you may already know, who are here from the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa. Chris Kenzoria, who is the head of marketing. Chris? And Alex Kim, who starts next week as the new general manager. This is his introduction to the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa. Alex? Here we go. And then we also have Mitch Stone, who is a historic consultant, who's done a lot of work on the project, who may or may not speak depending on whether we have some specific questions for him. And then finally, we have Bill Delback, who's from a California law firm in Los Angeles, which specializes in zoning and these types of issues. Bill actually has written many of the statutes that you are talking about tonight. And we submitted two letters. One was signed by Chris, that should be in your packet. One was signed by Chris that says, "Dear Honorable City Council Members, dated December 20th," it's about three or four pages long. I hope you've had a chance to read it. And the other was submitted by Bill, which is on the letterhead of his law firm. I'm not going to repeat those letters, I just want to make sure that we note them for the record. I'll let you take those. So let me say a couple of things. First of all, with regard to some of the questions you were answering, I do not believe there are any changes from what was denied by the Planning Commission. The second question, Councilman Blatts, that you asked a couple of times and was addressed was this notion of de novo review. De novo review really means de novo review. You get to do it anew, so there's no deference to the lower body. So this is, you take it from scratch. It's like a mulligan. Now, a couple of points that I want to make. The Crown family has been involved in the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa since the 1950s and now essentially has full ownership of the spa. The Crown family, and Steve will explain this, feels and believes that they have been a significant partner to the Ojai city, both as a supporter with regard to taxes, as well as a good corporate citizen. And we welcome the opportunity to participate in the democratic process. I've represented the family for more than 20 years, which, so I look a little bit, hopefully younger than I am. But I've represented them for 20 years. They are, they are people of their word. The importance with which this project holds to them is present by the fact that Steve got on a plane interrupting his family vacation to come out here. I got on a plane interrupting my family vacation to come out here. This is important, otherwise we wouldn't be here. The second thing I want to tell you is that, and you'll hear it from our speakers tonight, this project is important, but the project is to restore the property in a manner that is consistent with the Spanish architecture. This is not a willy-nilly restoration. This is a project, it is in our best interest, it's in the Crown family's best interest, to have this renovation be consistent with the architecture, which is part of what draws folks to the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa. It's significant and it's in our interests and it's in the city's interest to make sure that it is done right. So we appreciate your time and attention. You will hear a lot about the NEF Lounge, right? And, you know, when I first heard about this, I heard, you know, well, we're, we're going to, we have an issue in Ojai and it's about a bar. And I said, well, I've been to a lot of bars, you know, so I'm all four bars, let's go see what it looks like. But then as you get into the project, and you'll hear this from Dan, it's not just about a bar, it's about what will be the heart and soul of the new renovation. This bar and the renovation basically serves as a hub and a spoke to open up the property and drive traffic and service through the property. It also brings into the NEF Lounge, the historic NEF Lounge, which, which I was at today, and by the way, nobody hangs out in the NEF Lounge, nobody sees the history of the NEF Lounge, it will bring people into the NEF Lounge. The change is not a significant change, and in fact, as you could see from the Planning Commission, the folks who were involved in that meeting, when they saw something that they thought was historic, they changed it and kept it. And that's why you see some of the deviations and it got approved the way it is. So the project is to restore the property. This is not, this is not willy-nilly, this was studied for many, many months, different designs were looked at, and this is the one that works. The next point that you'll hear a lot from us about is significant competition in this industry. There are 124 five diamond resorts in the United States, no, I'm sorry, in the world. 90 of them are in the United States and 19 of them are in California. The Ojai Valley Inn and Spa is in a fiercely competitive marketplace, and as you could see from the letter that we submitted, we have been losing market share. Occupancy has been coming down. The trend line is not positive. The renovation is designed to reverse the trend line so that it goes in the opposite direction. And if you look at the way the Ojai property is laid out, it is not laid out consistent with much of its competition. So that's the purpose of, of the renovation, or I should say, that's one of the purposes of the renovation, and it's to reduce a trend. And you'll see, and Steve will show you, some charts that show that that trend has a significant impact not only on the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa, on its revenue, but it also has a significant impact on the city's tax basis. The Crown family is not a corporation, it is a family. It has been investing in this property since the 1950s. It is different, the Crown family is different than some corporate investor. They are not about short-term, five-year returns. They are about long-term commitment and long-term investment. And in this project, which will continue for some time, in these projects to renovate and update the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa, the purpose of them is to make a long-term investment so that it works for the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa and so that it works for the city. And if you put that in context, the way the hotel industry has evolved in the last several years, there is significant business traffic that is directed at hotels that really, hotels in this class, that really keeps them afloat during good times and during bad times, so that you don't get big fluctuations in occupancy rates depending on how the economy is doing. That's part of the goal. And that, again, is significant because it not only impacts the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa, but it impacts the city and its, its tax basis. Now, you'll also hear, and I should, I don't want to make a lot of lawyer points, but I'll make a little lawyer point if you don't mind. We obviously filed an appeal, so we were appealing the NEF Lounge issue. And that's what we're, that's what we prepared to present. This afternoon, we learned that there was going to be de novo review of everything. We have a little bit of an objection to that. We actually think that the decisions that weren't appealed shouldn't be heard, but for purposes of this hearing, we're prepared to do it all. And the reason we're prepared to do it all right now, even though we want to preserve our objections, is that it is really important because the hotel shuts down on January 5th to start the renovations, you know, planned shutdown. So time is of the essence for, for us. But you'll hear a little bit about a pool, the pool area, which really came up within the last, at least from our perspective, it came up this morning. We've got Mr. Skaggs to talk about it. We've got Mr. Delback to talk about the law and how it applies. We don't think it's an issue, but we're, we'll be prepared to address it. So with that, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Dan, our architect, to take you through the plans. We'll be prepared to answer questions when you have them, either now, later, during. We'd like to reserve a little bit of time to come up and do a short rebuttal in the event that there are points raised during, during commentary after we are done and make sure that we've answered all of your questions. But I want to emphasize that we very much appreciate your taking the time to go through this with us thoroughly. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Stan Klinger, CSA Architects, located in Woodland Hills, California. Been making a trip up here quite often lately. Been delighted to work with the city staff and, and enjoyed the interaction with them and they've been very cooperative and helpful and moving, what has been a very quick and speedy process. So what we would like to do now is just go through the project, remember how this thing works? And the screens will show you what we showed, exactly what we showed to the Historic Committee and to the Planning Commission. The basic, just to talk about the, the overall, there's also some boards here which are similar. The project is phase one of a series of projects that the inn is planning. This includes three elements. Modifications to the guest arrival, which is the outside landscaping, and entrance drive, which is located on the right there. Also included in that project is a modification of the lobby to improve that and also the entrance, the guest, hotel guest experiences as they come into the hotel. The next item is the, on the screen, which I can't point to, unless this, no, it doesn't work on the screen, is the pool area, which is a new pool, new cabanas, a new food service facility, and just a general upgrade of the whole pool experience. And then comes the modifications to the NEF Lounge, the Ervia Restaurant, and the courts that are adjacent to those, the outdoor courts. So this is the plan of the proposed entrance drive, the new entrance drive. The brown area shows a new paving material, there's new landscaping, new signage that'll, that'll kind of be visible as you drive in and make the, make that more apparent. There'll also in the future be a new entrance canopy that will lead you into the hotel in a covered way. This is the detailed drawing from the landscape architect, some of the plant materials, the use of- use of Italian cypress as markers. You'll see these kind of in, in groups of three in different places in the plan, in various plant materials. This is a picture of the lobby, the lobby entrance at the lower part of the picture. You come into a new, new paving, a new ceiling experience, there will be new windows that let light into that space, and create a, kind of a more vibrant character. And then in the back portion, as you go up on the page, will be an expanded lounge area that, adjacent to the lobby, and then from there, the doors, the new doors at the back, which are currently windows, that'll open to a new patio. This is a view of the lobby and section, shows the new, on the, on the left, the new registration desk, and on the right, a fireplace, with the existing fireplace and a seating area, and in the center, a new chandelier, a new table, and, and the new doors that open up to the entrance. This is a section through the lobby, the higher portion being the main lobby with the new windows up at the top, and then it extends back through the, the new areas that are being opened up. There's currently some walls there that are going to be removed, and that'll open up that space as a lounge. This is a picture of what we're proposing for the exterior entranceway. There'll be new doors and, and windows surrounding, and the round window will be removed in, in anticipation for a future canopy that will be attached to the building. Whoops. This shows a before and after shot, it's been photoshopped. We'll keep the, the shape of the arch, but the, the existing being the image on the, on the left, and the proposed, the image on the right, showing the new doors, the cropped top, and then the glass. A lot of, in the afternoon, the sunlight coming in there is pretty intense, and so this will kind of make that a little more, more comfortable space. The high windows on either side will introduce more light at the top. This is a picture of the proposed patio that's at the rear of the lobby. There'll be a fountain that's adjacent to the, the back wall, there's currently a walkway that goes behind that, and that'll have water that'll be visible from the lobby doors, the new lobby doors. Whoops. This shows the, a repositioning of the side door that's off of the, the lobby area, and this shows changing the windows on that building to doors. So the one on the right, on the left, is existing, the one on the right is the proposed. None of this, this building is a very recent building, so it doesn't have any historic character, other than the fact that it was designed in the style. This is the technical drawing for that new patio. Some of the materials that have been proposed, we delivered large sample boards of the actual materials to the planning, the planning department, and then was subsequently presented to the Planning Commission and the Historic Committee. And we get to the Miravilla Restaurant and the, the Neff Bar and Lounge Plan. And here, I'd like to open up a board here. This, this exhibit here shows the Neff Lounge, it was originally designed by Wallace Neff. This is the original drawing that was obtained from the Huntington Library. We were lucky to find that, Mitch Stone, who was our historic consultant, was able to obtain these. It is located in, in the red line kind of shows where the work, where the, the subject space is. If we look at this drawing, the upper portion of the, the drawing is the, the Neff Lounge And this new exhibit shows that, the location of the wall where we're proposing to remove it. In this particular part of the, of the hotel, the Neff Lounge is in kind of a strategic position. It lies between the restaurant and the Oak Terrace, which is the outdoor area that's directly to the north of the, of the Neff Lounge. And consequently, it's a place where people might go, but typically just walk through or around. And the main thrust of what we're trying to achieve here is to make this a more vital part of the hotel, and to do that, it's necessary to remove this wall. The opening becomes about 34 feet wide, the bar, it becomes a part of this area, which is right here, which is the existing transition space, which is formerly, in the original design, was a portico, they called it a south portico. So this exhibit that I'm showing on the board is just, which is basically the same as this with a few notes. The bar is in this location, the Neff Lounge is here. We're proposing to keep the existing fountain, although it's not the original fountain or the original design, it was built more recently, but it's in the same place as the original fountain was. There's a fireplace here, which doesn't appear to have been part of the original design, but we'll keep if need be, and then the original fireplace here. In the original Neff plan, there were two window, two doors shown in these locations. In the subsequent building, whether it was built originally as windows, or because of a grade difference, or if the doors were there and then they built, built them as windows, we don't know exactly. But in the original drawings, it does show doors in, in this location. So the, the two major elements that we're most interested in are the, the doors here and the wall between what's the new bar and the Neff Lounge. We really feel like the Neff Lounge will benefit greatly in terms of its use. Currently, whenever I come up here, and I've been up here several times in the last few months, it's, there's never anybody, anybody sitting in there. So it, it's a way to kind of, when there's a bar, there's an activity, and it'll be a lot more used. And so, along with that activity, will come use of the Neff Lounge. The exist, the, the restaurant is here, and it's proposed to be renovated, there's a new private dining room here, a private dining room here and here, and a new walkway here that kind of ties this outdoor terrace, which currently is not used, because there's a room intervening between the restaurant and the terrace. So the corridor will bring people out to that terrace and make it more useful, and it has one of the greatest views from the, from the hotel out onto the golf course. It's also intended that their breezeway become a real breezeway, that the windows through here be removed, and that we allow the air to go through there, and this becomes the access to the entrance, which the new entrance for the restaurant will be here with a new porch. It was also intended that off of the Neff Lounge, that there's a new porch that opens into this, what we call a Neff corridor, or the aroma court. So all of these things combined kind of make this Neff Lounge development kind of the center, the hub of this whole operation, in terms of the food service, a bar, bar service that takes out on, will come out into this area here on the Oak Terrace, also being able to activate this Neff Court, which currently is, is sometimes used, but maybe could be better used, and then also creating a new entrance for the restaurant, a secondary entrance being here off of the bar in, in this way. So these are the main elements of what we're proposing to do in the restaurant and the Neff Lounge. If we go, continue on with some of these exhibits, this was a, a view that showed the proposed section through the, the Neff Lounge, showing the, the Neff Bar, and also a section through the entire restaurant. This is the Ojai Court, which is the entrance to the restaurant, and this is the Neff Court, which is accessed either from the walkway that goes by the pool, or from the Neff Lounge with the new doors. Some landscape materials, details. This is an illustration that shows the substantially unchanged north elevation of the Neff Lounge and the, the adjacent buildings, and the, the bottom is the east elevation, showing the proposed doors at the Neff Lounge, which is the, on the right. This is a Photoshop image that shows on the left, the existing windows, and on the right, the proposed doors. The idea being, keeping the exact, a similar look and feel to the windows with the new doors, divided light, and the opening would be exactly the same, except extending to the floor. And this is a image of the proposed walkway modifications between the Neff Court and the Ojai Court, which is the entrance to the restaurant. The idea here is to, when the restaurant's open, these shutters will be open, so you'll see into the courtyard, and when the restaurant's closed, they'll be, they'll be closed. These are some images of the Neff Lounge and the, the original country club, some of the prominent features, some examples of some of the materials to be used in the Miravilla Restaurant and the Neff Lounge. This is an image of the pool and proposed changes to the pool. The pool is an all-new pool, it is, got a different orientation from the pre, from the previous, or the current, the current pool. It has a new set of cabanas on the right side there, and also maintains the trellising, but repurposes that as more private sitting areas. On the lower left-hand corner is a new food service facility that'll have a, an expanded menu, as well as a bar service there. The restrooms will be completely renovated in this area, bringing them up to current code, as well as new, all-new finishes. The material for the pool deck is going to be a granite that has a home, a, a little rough finish on it. And then in the upper center, online with the pool, is a new fountain feature, that is a zero-edge fountain on the pool side, and then it cascades down on the golf course side, so the road adjacent to the back end of the pool area will have this feature exposed, and the golfers will see it, and anybody else that walks there. This is a more precise paving plan that shows the layout of the pavers. This is the elevation of the cabanas. Another elevation, this is looking back at the existing trellises on the south side. And this is the entrance off of the west side. Some more materials, you can see there's a similarity between, between the materials. The materials are all sympathetic to the existing character of the property. The centerpiece that's a little rough there is the pool material, the coping and the pavers, some of the light fixtures proposed and paving patterns. This is a technical drawing of the pool, some landscape elements surrounding the pool, there'll be some palms and other perennial plants. This is an example of what is proposed for the cabanas. We should present also, going back to the Neff Lounge, we had an artist prepare some additional renderings that give more clarity to what we're proposing there. We had so little time to kind of come to the commission hearing and, and the committee hearing previous to this, that we didn't have time to prepare something that was really useful, so.
These, these two boards, a little straight, in the best way possible.
Okay, yeah, sure. Okay, sure, that's great.
And then also, at, at the end, could you turn it around so the public could see? That would be great.
Yeah. Actually, we've got two, two videos here, so if you can show you both.
I feel like I'm right here.
You know, I'd like to ask a real quick question, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The real, I do have a real quick question. On page, on Attachment G, page nine of 24, it states that the roof and the ceiling originally was, there was nothing to be, that was supposed to be done, and I know when I talked with Mr. Crown, that he mentioned that the interior west ceiling was going to be restored to its original character, like the east end.
Right.
And I, and I see in this drawing that the, the lowered ceiling is still in these drawings. So what is the intention, to remove that lowered ceiling, or, or is it intended to stay?
I know who's got the right, the answer to that question, it's actually Mr. Crown. If I could just have him answer, Mr. Mayor, that would probably, that way we won't have to answer twice.
Yes, please do. Yes, Mr. Crown.
Steve Crown, for the record. That's exactly what we talked about. And the, the intention has been, and the intention will continue to be, to bring it back to its original look. And if I said that it was going to be completely vaulted throughout, we went back into the records, we went back into the pictures of what they looked like, it wasn't exactly that way, because there was an eating area in the back, little dining area, so it had a different use, and it had a different ceiling configuration. The, the location where I pointed out to, I think, all of you, where the, where the one column seemed to have been plastered over, and then the ceiling got low, that actually was another area of the Inn, but that is historically the way it is, or was, I should say. Were we to change it, we would not be going back to where it was, we'd be creating something that was not the Wallace Neff design, nor was it the original design of the, of the Neff Lounge. So our intention is to go original. If I made a mistake, and I think I probably did, because I didn't realize it came back just that far, I thought it came back to the other side, so my, my comments to you were an error. So I, thank you for the question.
And if I could just clarify on the design question, so the, where the ceiling pattern changes from the vaulted truss to the different configuration, that was the dividing line that I'm seeing in the original drawings, between what's labeled as the lounge and what's labeled as the dining area.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to be clear about that, okay.
And in fact, we, having studied it quite exhaustively, from the original drawings, it appears that what is there is quite similar to what the original was, whether it's exactly the same, or whether they built it the way it was designed, we don't know for sure, but when we go in there to do a little work, you know, in the ceiling, the higher part of the ceiling, we'll, we'll know more about it, and certainly preserve whatever was originally, the original intent.
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions?
I do have a question. I, I, you referred to one of the slides saying that on the original plans, it was supposed to be doors instead of windows.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And on, on the Phase Two Historical Resource Report, one of the, on the, it was, I think on page 12 of 24, it talks about lost features, and it says, it goes on to say that the two windows on the eastern end of the lounge proposed to be converted to doorways may or may not be historic features. So it's still unclear whether those were original or not, is that correct?
This exhibit right here, that's to my right, shows the, this is cut out of his drawing, but we have the full drawings here, but this is the east elevation, and it shows, definitely shows doors in both of those locations. And so this is kind of the proposed look, which is exactly what they have here, using the existing openings at the top.
But the windows are not the original.
Well, that, that's true. The, the windows themselves are, are not the original windows, they've been replaced, right?
Okay. Because according to the Phase Two Historical Resource Report that you guys provided, it was unclear to them whether it was or was not.
Right. It's definitely, we know it's all new hardware on those windows, so those windows are not the original windows. They're, they're in the original openings.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any further questions for?
Yes, I do.
Oh, yes.
Very quickly.
Councilmember Wyerick?
Um, another-
Another feature, I believe the, the original drawings show not a terracotta, but a herringbone pattern in the breezeway.
That's, that's correct.
That was the original outdoor area was, was a herringbone.
In the South Portico, we believe from the drawings, and then it's also further evidenced in the, in the breezeway, where it currently is a herringbone pattern, very similar to what NEF proposed for the South Portico. So we believe that those terracotta pavers that are there now are not the original, that the original intent was a terr-
Again, the Historic Resources Report, that's, that was an issue, that's a correction to the Historic Resources Report. And the intent, to be clear, is to restore the herringbone in that breezeway, or not?
No, the, the intent there is to remove the existing terracotta pavers, and to put down a wood floor, oak floor.
Floor, okay.
Similar in, to what's proposed, what's existing in the NEF, which our intent is to refinish the existing wood, so that remains, and it'll be new art flooring that runs perpendicular to it.
So the intent's to take, remove the terracotta, go with hardwood, huh?
Yes, that's correct.
I understand.
Any further questions?
Something else just occurred to me very quickly, I'm sorry. On the, on the west, on the north entrance, those, the doors originally closed to a, and I excuse the nomenclature, a column.
Mm-hmm.
So those columns have long been removed on the, on the north side, on the north openings as well.
That's correct. There, there were initially, I think, there was, what's interesting is there was a, the original design, and then there was a subsequent revision that was actually part of what we found at the Huntington Library. And that shows, the revision is what shows those columns that divided the doors. So there were three doors with the plastered columns in between. The vestiges of, the remaining vestige of those is in the, the south wall. There's two of those elements there.
Thank you.
Good evening. Steve Crown again, for the, for the record. And I represent my family, who has been privileged to be a part of the Ojai Valley Inn for over 50 years. Unfortunately, I actually remember early days at the inn, because I was there. Anyway, good evening, and thank you very much, Mayor Lara, and councilman, and councilwoman. Thank you for the time. Thank you for putting this together on such short notice. And thank you for letting us present to you what we feel is a, both an important and a very meaningful program that we want to bring back the inn to, in order to continue to maintain its presence in the industry. As I said, my family's been involved in this for over a half a century. We've had a great partnership with the town of Ojai. It's really been one of the longer-standing partnerships that my, that I can remember that my family's had with, with any towner in, in the country. And it's been one that we, we cherish. We think it's been collaborative, we think it's been incredibly beneficial for both sides, and we think we've tried at least to be good corporate citizens. When there were issues that came up in the city, we tried to respond as best we could, we tried to assist where we could, and we, we really welcome this type of partnership. And that's one of the reasons why I'm here today, because partners talk to each other face-to-face, partners do things in person, and this is important, and an important partnership for us. We, as, as Craig said, we have two five-diamond properties. In 2002, the inn was a three-diamond property. We went from a three to a five. I don't know of any other hotel that's done that. And we did so by bringing features, bringing attributes, bringing rooms, increasing some of the spaces, putting ballrooms in, doing, doing what is necessary to provide a competitive and a very appealing hotel for the public that wants to come and stay at the inn. We've held many family events at the inn, and it's been proud for, we've been very proud of promoting the inn to our friends, family, and, and associates as we go about the country. And in fact, one of the things that makes us most proud is when people come to the inn and stay, and then return and say, it's really one of the gems that they've, that they've ever stayed at. And we feel very proud to hear that kind of a response. The other thing is, we've known a lot of the folks that have worked at the inn. There've been multiple generations. You look at the inn, and there's a culture, and there's a feeling, and there's a, there's an esprit de corps that the inn has, that makes it very different than a lot of hotels. You've got generations of people that have worked there. My family knows many of those folks, or better said, they know many of us, because they knew us when we were little, and remember us as we got older. And now they're meeting our grandkids, and I think it's, it's a very special place for them to, to see us continually come back. And so I guess, in summary, the inn's been a very important part of our family, at least the family legacy, for many, many years. I'm third generation. My grandfather is the one that initially got us involved. My dad was there during the, the later years, and then my brother Jim and I were the next two that stepped up. And he was there before I was in the 85 renovation. I took over shortly after that, and, and I've been involved with the inn ever since. As far as explaining the importance of this renovation to both us and to the city, I'd like to take a look at it on a financial basis. The Ojai Valley Inn, I think as you all are aware, is very important to, to the city as far as its tax base. In 2014, we paid approximately 2.3 million to the city in transit occupancy tax, or TOT. This constituted over 40% of the city's total general fund revenues. It's a big chunk. We're important, but at the same time, we're very humbled by being, being, being a part of the program, being part of the city. We employ a little over 700 people, full and part-time basis, and we draw visitors from all around the world and internationally to the inn. In the last, last couple of years, 2014, 2015, we've been named as one of the 100 best hotels in the world, according to Cohn-Donast. One of the many folks that are out there that recognize hotel properties. This is really one of the elite classes, and puts us in a very, very good group of competitors. It has a halo effect on, on the other businesses and attractions in town, and I think, as Craig said, you know, there are 124 five-diamond properties in, in both Canada, North America, Mexico, and the Caribbean. 90 of them in the United States. We have been one here. The Little Nell in Aspen has been a five-diamond property since it opened about 26 years ago. And our intention is to maintain that high level of quality and service, because that's really, it's, it's our name on the door essentially, and people that come here are really our guests. And also, the visitors that come here, they come into the town of Ojai. That's another one of the reasons they come here, is it's, it's a lovely place to visit, it's a great place to take a family. And it's, and when you come over the mountains, you all know, because you live here, it's relaxing, it's peaceful. It is really a, just a pleasure to come here every time. I look for reasons to come to Ojai on business. It's, it's sometimes, you know, it's not, it's not hard duty. We, as a result of having this property being part of the family, we've looked at it as been, being a mutually beneficial arrangement between ourselves and the city. It receives personal attention from a family, and if it were part of a corporate organization, or part of a private equity fund, or a hedge fund, or any other type of large chain, it would be a different conversation. You would see me one year, you'd see somebody else the next year, somebody else the next year. You would see a lot of different people roll through here. Their jobs depend on bottom line, their Bob's, jobs depend on short-term returns, their jobs depend on a lot of different things that my family really isn't as hard-pressed on. We're here for the long haul. I think 50 years, quite honestly, in our family, short-term, I think, is somewhere in the 50 to 60-year timeframe. I'm not sure what long-term is, because at this point, you know, our, our desire is to stick around for at least the next generation. And the fact that I'm here tonight, I think, just, you know, tries, at least I'm trying to say that our family feels this is important, and we owe you both the time and respect to be able to give the presentation personally. Why the renovations are needed? It's a competitive marketplace. In 2008, 2009, the economy crumbled. We weren't being helped much by our Congress, saying, don't stay at fancy hotels. But at the same time, we continued to put money into the hotel, we continued to try and drive business, we continued to try and keep up with the competition. We have fallen behind in many areas. We've, we have actually improved over the last three years, but the unfortunate thing for us is that our competition isn't standing still. They're putting money into their facilities, they're improving, and they're renovating, and they're bringing new opportunities and activities and areas for groups and individuals to stay, and that's, that's the group that we compete against. Who's our competition? My answer is anybody in the world, because our customers can go anywhere. They choose to come here. And I think that's a very, very important statement. The 90 hotels, of the 19 that are in California, they are competition for us, but our customers really, they, they can go anywhere that they choose to on their vacations, and many of them choose to come here because they love it. Through 2014, we are, we are finding that our group occupancy, which has been increasing, but it still trails, trails the competitive set by almost 1,400 basis points. And that's a lot. And this is according to the STAR report, which is an industry standard and puts us up against our competition. And part of the reason is that some of the pieces to the puzzle are missing. We have a shortage of some spaces, and we have a lack of areas for people to congregate after meetings, or after dinner, or after formal events. And therefore, the NEF Lounge is an important part of this, this puzzle. It's, and, and I guess the most important thing to say is that we stepped back over the last year and did a master plan. We brought in two people, actually. We brought in a, an expert in food and beverage, Clark Wolf, who came to us through a recommendation of Danny Myers, who was a hotelier, was a restaurateur on the East Coast. Clark's had 40 years, 45 years, I never really asked how many, but it's at least that many, in food and beverage, really one of the more respected individuals in that field. He in turn introduced us to EDG, who does food and beverage and master planning. And we decided to step back and really take a look at the property and say, all right, how are we positioned? What are we looking like? What do we need? Where should things go? So the question of where and why the NEF Lounge, and why the bar there, it's really fairly obvious. And we came to that conclusion after looking at a lot of different locations for bars, and a lot of different locations for, for people to congregate. It's the center, and it's the heart, and it's the most, really the most important part of the property. And that's what we really want to highlight, and that's where we really want people to congregate. Right now, they congregate in Jimmy's, a 55-person pub. It's like a man cave that sits underneath, and if you can't get in, or you don't want to watch a hockey or football game, or some other sporting event, you really don't have many options. This gives people an opportunity to, to mingle, an opportunity to relax, an opportunity to, to come and have a casual conversation. We could put music in there. It's, it gives us a much, much more flexible use of the space, and it actually brings people into what we think is one of the more historic parts of the building. From, once the project is, and by the way, our competition, they have these spaces. So when the, the meeting planners come out and look at Ojai, they love what they see in general, they love what they're looking at as far as the surrounding area, they look at the meeting spaces, they look at some of the dining facilities, but what do they do when they're all done? And that's why this is an important piece to the puzzle. And the other part of it is, when we go through the rest of the Miravilla renovation, it really utilizes the space, and it allows for much easier flow of people, both to and from the restaurants. It's a much more logical flow. I kind of wish we'd done this a long time ago, it would have been much, much more beneficial to us. Over the next few years, we, we feel this project will have both benefits to us, and then ultimately benefits to the city in the form of the TOT, which we pay each year. We think when the project is completed, our estimates, and we tend to be a little bit low on this, like to under-promise, over-deliver, it's about $370,000 of additional taxes paid to the city. And, and that's based upon some very, very conservative numbers, but at the same time, we think they're very, excuse me, very realistic. And there's a chart that's somewhere on the, it's the, the one chart. I'm not sure where it is. Okay. Failure to do it, we think is going to result in a loss of both occupancy and rate, because we have, we have to deliver on the promises made to our guests. We think, um, yeah, that one. What you see here is basically a sensitivity analysis. I apologize for the size of the lettering and the numbers, but basically, it shows in the center, with no increase in occupancy and no increase in rate, there's no impact on the inn. If we increase occupancy to 2% and 4%, then there is an increase in both the taxes that come to the city, and if you go up in rate, there's additional monies that come to the city. In the orange box, or whatever color it is, in the upper right-hand corner is the 370,000 that I was talking about. The other side of the story is, if we don't do it, we drop into the red zone. And the red zone means it's less money that comes to the city, less money that comes to us. It's a less, we have less of a shot at being able to put both rate and occupancy into the inn, because we're either going to have to struggle harder for business, fight harder for it, or it becomes more commoditized, and we have to work on the price. That is not exactly the direction a five-diamond property wants or needs to go. Our goal is to get into the green area and actually exceed that. We think that this, this improvement to the, to the Miravilla dining room, and to the NEF Lounge, and the bar that's going to be adjacent to it, will provide us with both competitive opportunities to bring and draw people into the area, they'll spend more, there'll be more activity, and it's also going to make us much more competitive against the other competitive set. From a historic preservation standpoint, I think we've been sensitive to this. I really do. I, I think that, that, you know, we, we value Wallace-NEF. We've taken our golf course and brought it back to the George Thom, exactly to the way George Thomas designed it. It was not that way after 1945. It was changed. Holes were put in, there was additional work that was done. We brought it back to the original one, because we valued that particular history in the Ojai Valley Inn. As far as the lounge is concerned, we want it to come back to its original design and its original historical significance. We desire, we hired designers, architects, historical consultants to help us develop a plan that wouldn't detrimentally alter the key historical features of the inn or the NEF. And I think we have had good representation by ownership, and we wanted to do it right. As far as the wall's concerned, it's really a key element in being able to provide access to what we think will be the heart of the property. The NEF Lounge provides access to the outside, as Dan has already told you. It allows us to accommodate different types of groups coming through there. It also provides us with, I think, sort of a competitive edge. And quite honestly, from the standpoint of promoting it, we're going to promote it as far, best we can, because this is going to be really one of our pride and joys. Removal of the wall is really an integral part of doing that. It's, it's, it's what really opens up the NEF and allows us to, to, to work with the existing space in a much more efficient and effective manner. Let's see. As far as timing, we, we thought we were being responsive to the requirements, and we have a very short window, this is the good news, we have a very short window when we can afford to shut down and turn people away, because we effectively don't take reservations. That's this, that's this January. We will close the inn for 10 days, we'll do a lot of other things at the same time, deep cleans and the like, but the project needed, needs to begin on January 5th. If it doesn't, it will not start. We'll withdraw the permit. I guess, most importantly, from my standpoint, we feel we've been both good partners and good stewards of the inn for the city and for our, for our family. And this partnership is important, the inn is important, the community is important. We want to reinvigorate it, we want you to be proud of it, we want you to look at the inn as really one of your, your model citizens. And we look forward to both a continued and long-lasting relationship with the city. And we, again, thank you for your time tonight, and we hope you will vote in favor of, of our proposal. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Crown. Any other council member have questions for Mr. Crown? No?
I just, I've got, I don't know, Mr. Crown, whether you can answer it or not. Or the architect. But one of the things that I was noticing, and it was, it's the very first drawing that came from the Huntington Library, where it showed doors going to the south, protocol, protocol, and then, portico, and then the, the doors to the, to the north. And it showed one column in each of those doors with, with a door on each side of the column. I don't know whether you need to put it up or not, but that was a, I'm looking at, at that. And then there's a blow-up.
I have an entire set of drawings here.
Okay. Okay. The one that I'm looking at is this one, that shows a door on either side of a column, so that it looked like there would be four doors going in, including the dining area, and four doors going out, with a column in between. And then the blow-up shows its existing configuration of two columns in that same space.
Right.
So, so when was, when was that changed? Is this an original drawing that was, was drawn after this?
That's, that's correct. The, the set of drawings had, the first set, we were all numbered, and then had two sheets that were alternative, which- that were alternative, which is what they build, I think, finally. So somewhere in between, they decided to change, make that change.
All right.
The openings actually got a little wider, too, to accommodate the three doors and those columns in between.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
I had two questions.
Yes, Councilman Haney.
You're not changing any of the square footage of the interior of the structure? It's remaining the same. Was it 41,000 square feet?
That's, that's correct, with the exception of 100 square feet approximately, where we're pushing out the bar at the, at the pool. So it's like, it's really service area that's being added to the bar. Everything else, it's all within the existing building, including the NEF Lounge, which is about 1,260 square feet.
And the pool areas, that square footage is all remaining the same?
The deck is about the same area. That's correct, yeah.
You're not enlarging it?
No, it stays pretty much.
It's going to stay within somewhat of the same footprint?
Yeah, it's reconfigured, the pool's new. This becomes the main pool, and the family pool will move to the...
What is now their garden pool.
That's right.
Okay.
Good evening. Brian Skaggs, Director of Engineering. And before you, we have some pictures on the legal-sized paper. And this, this kind of shows this main pool facility before you, and it kind of through time. This will be the fourth pool facility that's on this same site. It will be the third on this site, since I've started working at the Inn about 21 years ago. So you see the first, the first pictures are, you know, 40s, 50s, I think we're guessing on 60s on some of them, but the interesting one is close to the back where it shows the two pools, side by side. That's as it was when I started there, 21 years ago. So the pool on the right, obviously, that's a lap pool, three-lane lap pool, four-foot deep. But the interesting part is, on the left, that's a recreational pool that was a continuous eight-foot depth. I know that because I had to clean it every morning when I got to work. So anyway, this, the last drawing shows the pool as it is today. So I guess my point is, that pool is not on native or virgin soil. It's been dug, re-dug, and re-dug again. That being said, we do intend to hire a cultural monitor to be there when we're digging the new pool.
Any questions for Mr. Skaggs?
Mayor and council members, Bill Delvack of Armbruster-Goldsmith and Delvack. At the outset, let me just say that I appreciate even a brief opportunity to escape Los Angeles and come to, come to beautiful Ojai. We've submitted a letter regarding the substance and legal reasons why the appeal should be granted, and we've noted a few technical legal issues in the footnotes, but I really want to summarize a few key points on the merits. In my experience, which at this date is 30 years representing property owners, developers, preservation groups, 30 years of experience, in my experience, historic hotels are the most highly evolving property type of any historic property for the very type of issue that's before you here today. The competition is constantly improving, and historic hotels, in my experience, constantly have to improve. The municipal code that staff has laid out in a very helpful report is very clear. The permit may be approved if it will not adversely affect any exterior architectural features or any other feature which led to the designation. And this is an interesting wording. This is not a typical wording in local codes. It focuses on retaining those features directly related to the designation. The report that was before the council in 2006, and as in your packet attached to my letter, did not call out the windows as a key feature, and did not call out the wall. Clearly, they're part of the building, but they weren't what led to the designation. What led to the designation was the stairwell, the stucco, the exterior design, and then, not at all surprisingly, but quite well noted, it's really about the connections to NEF and Libby. And that's what the designation needs to identify and deal with. You know, my view, it defies reason to think that a wall or windows would lead to designation. It's NEF, and it's Libby that led to the designation. You've heard about the change of the windows to doors. You've heard that originally they were drawn as doors. We don't actually know how it was built, but again, in my experience, this is exactly the type of change that even if they were originally windows, would be allowed in a project meeting, the Secretary of Interior Standards. As Mr. Klinger noted, the windows themselves aren't original, they're 1994, I mean, proving that the hotel needs to evolve and renovate. The only thing that could be original, and we're not sure that it is, is the opening. And so the issue about cutting those doors, in my view, is the sort of thing that would get routinely approved even with historic tax credit projects, which this is not. I want to talk about the standards for just a minute. You know, over decades and eventually centuries, there's going to be a city council here 100 years from now, thinking about historic buildings and potentially this building. Over centuries, historic buildings are clearly going to need to evolve, to remain useful, while still protecting historic character. There needs to be some methodology for determining changes, and in my view, around the country, the universal yardstick are the Secretary of Interior Standards. And they don't prohibit change. In fact, by their very nature, they're intended to guide change. And we believe, as Mr. Stone has concluded, that this project, on an overall basis, which is exactly what the standards look at as an overall basis, that there's ample basis for the city to conclude that this project meets the standards. I want to speak for a minute about CEQA. Actually, I could speak for hours, but you don't want to hear that. The rules that are currently in place were adopted about 25 years ago, and I did have the pleasure of working on those rules. Interestingly, they have stood the test of time. In this council chamber tonight, as has occurred over the last 25 years, the questions become, will a project destroy eligibility, adversely affect its character such that it's no longer historically significant? And very importantly, there's a categorical exemption, which was intended to incentivize good renovation. There's a categorical exemption for projects that meet the Secretary of Interior Standards. So I think you have two good bases for proceeding, that we're not adversely altering the building, and that in our view, the project meets the standards. I believe you're going to hear tonight on an issue of somewhat late occurrence to us, which is about archaeology and CEQA. Mr. Skaggs just told you that this is an area, the pool is an area, that has been highly altered over the years, at its depth. The last renovation of the pool area had a monitor, no artifacts were found. Staff has proposed, and we not only accept, we would do anyway, is a monitor for archaeological and cultural resources. So on the merits, there's no reason to be concerned, but in the eventuality of an unanticipated concern, there's a measure that protects it. There's a second measure recommended by staff that we strongly agree to, too, which is a commemorative or interpretive program. Staff has made a few particular suggestions. We agree with those, we'd be pleased to sit down and work out with that. We actually think we will propose something that goes beyond that, actually, information to the guests, you know, in the room and otherwise, because, as Mr. Crown said, the hotel actually does promote its historic significance. It does want people to come here because of the beauty and the historic significance. Ms. Wall did note one thing of concern to us, that we would request that that condition be tied, the interpretive program be tied to the certificate of occupancy. As Mr. Crown just stated, there's this very narrow window of time to carry out renovations to the hotel on an economic and construction basis, and that will be very quick. So we would request that the condition about the interpretive program, that it must be approved and perhaps even in place by the time of certificate of occupancy. I just want to conclude on a few points. You know, I often say that historic buildings can't save themselves. Only economically viable uses can. And that's the question before you here today, is how can the Inn remain economically viable? This is an important change, because it will allow the Inn to continue to attract and even attract new visitors. Your tax base and their economics are closely aligned, and I truly believe that the council should take comfort that doing the right thing for the city and the Inn will not result in doing the wrong thing for the lounge. For these reasons, we respectfully urge you to approve the project. I am, myself and others, are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any of the council have any questions for Mr. Delvack?
Thank you.
Chair Laura?
Yes. Councilmember Gray Rick?
Really, just asking you to respond based on your expertise, and I looked at your qualifications, and that's why I'm asking a couple of questions about that. When it's proposed for something like going back to an original opening, like the door that's being asked for, how important is it, or not important, to try to evoke, let's say that possibly is, would be approved or not approved, but if it was approved, how important are stipulations about trying to evoke the original design elements of those doors in historic standards that you're talking about? That's the first question. I'll let you answer that one.
Well, the standards do pay careful attention to not creating a false sense of historicism. Here, we have an existing opening, and so that gives the clue, and I think that's probably the best way to proceed, is to use the work of the existing opening. However, you know, because it is not an original door, we are certainly open to the notion of it appearing somewhat different.
Yeah, I was thinking about the original intent for the NEF design, if there's details about how those doors looked, or were contemplated to have looked if never built.
I've had this question so many times about, well, what the architect thought or would do if Wallace NEF were here today. Frankly, if Wallace NEF were here today, he'd be standing here, and I wouldn't be, because he would be proposing a good use for the building. But that's conjecture. The drawings aren't conjecture. The drawings say what Wallace NEF would have done. And the reason why I think that's significant is not whether it was or wasn't done, it just means it's in keeping with the overall design of the building. If it was originally contemplated, to do it now certainly wouldn't destroy the historic character.
Well, I was particularly struck by looking at the original drawings, just the, that the way the doors looked on the exterior were obviously very different than how they look now. There were, he was putting stylistic elements in those doors, and that's long gone, of course. And that's what I was sort of asking, just from your point of view. And the other point I wanted to ask about is, you heard the proposal that there not be a restoration of the herringbone when the terracotta's removed, but it could be to hardwood. If you could speak to that issue, I mean, we have a clear indication of what the original design was. Just your thoughts on that? In terms of how, what, from an expertise point of view, what are the appropriate evaluative criteria?
So now you gave me something across my sweet spot. This one, I should, this one, I think there's really a clear answer. The standards do not require restoration. Restoration is a fine treatment, but in no way to the Secretary of Interior Standards for rehabilitation, and now I'm in the weeds. There's a distinction in the guidelines and standards between restoration, rehabilitation, reconstruction. The standards do not require restoration. It certainly might be a good design approach, however, it wouldn't be a very good design for the lounge, in the sense that you're certainly not going to bring the herringbone into the existing lounge, and so that in terms of a cohesive look, and again, it's supposed to be a pretty building, let's, you know, let's not forget that. It was always designed to be a beautiful building. In terms of a good look to the building, the design decision was to propose wood throughout.
Well, thanks. I was just, you have more expertise than me, and I...
Appreciate the opportunity.
Anybody else have any questions? Yes, Councilmember Haney.
In my reviewing this, I did, I did pull up the Secretary of Interior Standards and Guidelines. Because obviously, there's a lot of this that we don't know about, and a lot of this that we have to learn quickly. I just had a question on the design side of it. Is there anything in the procedures that would have, that you could send something to the state to have them actually look at what you're proposing, and either bless it, or say, take it back to the drawing board?
In my recent experience over the last three to five years, the State Office has a great deal of, the State Office of Historic Preservation has a great deal of difficulty carrying out mandated duties. I don't, I don't actually envision that they would even enter into this discussion. So while there might be a way to devise a way of getting in front of them, I think they would be disinclined. And we've also heard, and I think this is important, and by the way, I very much respect the comment that says, you're not experts in this. You're being called to really weigh and examine technical issues where you don't have expertise, but you do have staff, and there are consultants, and they're discussing it. But what we've heard recently is, when there are local issues, the State Office of Historic Preservation says, let it be resolved locally. And so I respect the question, I just don't think it's a practical solution. And again, I will say, the reality here is, in order to hit the window of time, to allow construction without true economic disruption to the Inn, it's in the beginning part of January, so it wouldn't be a workable solution to go to the state. Thank you.
Anybody else have further questions? No?
I do have a couple of questions. In your line of work, have you, is it pretty common to have ambiguous or vague language, like what the resolution states? The item listed to be protected was the exterior of the lounge. I mean, that clearly doesn't define what the features are, but it's very vague. Or another example is, the guidelines established for review of work permit to the lounge was that the clubhouse should not be altered. Further, and that HPC should review any proposed alteration efforts. I mean, that's pretty contradictory.
Yeah, well, I actually think in one way, if we could all take out a pen and edit a little bit, we could harmonize it very quickly. What it says is, you need approval to do changes. That's really what it says when you put them together. And you should well need approval to do changes. That's why we're here tonight, we're asking your approval on a change. So, and we do agree that this issue is de novo, so you can act without regard to what the HPC did. It is de novo, and we think this is the body, or the HPC could have been the body, to determine whether the changes are appropriate. And I'll just say again, it can't be that buildings never get changed over the decades or centuries. It just, I mean, it defies reason. That's not a pro-preservation policy, to put a stranglehold on the evolution of buildings. What you should do, with all due respect, is manage the change. And the way to manage the change is this type of careful review and the use of the Secretary of Interior Standards. So I think when you, and I'll obviously defer to your learned city attorney, as to whether or not you have the right to make approved changes, I think it's clear in the wording that you do.
Any further questions? No?
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'm going to open a public hearing. I do have several cards. Again, I'm going to be really flexible with the time, because I feel like it's really important to hear from our public. And I am going to start with, I see some of the historical preservation commissioners, and I do have two cards from them. I'm going to start with them. Chair McCready, and then followed by, I think it's Vice Chair, right? Walker? Yes?
Do you want me to...
No, neither.
Thank you. Darwin McCready, I'm Ojai resident, 908 Tico Road. I'm an architect with over 40 years of experience. Prior to moving to Ojai 12 years ago, I lived in San Francisco for 29 years, working for the architecture firm of Hornberger-Rustell, which specializes in hotel design. While living in San Francisco, I was a member of San Francisco Heritage for 20 years. I've been a member of the National Historic Trust for 30 years. While at Hornberger-Rustell, I taught a college-level class on hospitality-designed hotels and restaurants. I also was lead architect on the renovation and restoration of the Hotel del Coronado, a National Historic Trust property. So I have a deep understanding of the issues that come before us tonight. I've reviewed all of the materials submitted by the applicant. I understand the space plans very well. I understand the sections, the drawings, and I also understand the space planning and design challenges they face. It's very clear. I have also reviewed the staff report in detail, and I find it deeply troubling and its apparent effort at obfuscation, and its disregard of the work and the words of the Historic Preservation Commission. The report seems to be designed to create confusion on this landmark, over the landmarking process, over what is landmarked, and what types of alterations are allowed under the Ojai landmark law. There should be no confusion. Everybody knows when this, when this property was landmarked, everybody knows what was landmarked, and everyone knows what is allowed to be altered. There is a mistake in the staff report that I have to report, because it highlights a very useful hypothetical... a very useful hypothetical comparison. It states that alterations have been permitted by the HPC in the past on the arcade, and this is not so. Alterations have been allowed on the storefronts behind the arcade, but never on the arches or the front of the facade of the arcade itself. This commission would never allow such a thing, and this commission would, should never allow, the Historic Preservation Commission should never allow the significant alteration of the NEF Lounge. The Spanish-style architecture which is embodied in the NEF Lounge is not open and airy. That is a misstatement. This type of architecture is actually quite dark, with small openings. Opening up this is not in keeping with the historic architecture of this project. Allowing the removal of the south wall would substantially and significantly damage irrevocably a city landmark. I urge you to deny.
Vice Chair Walker?
Good evening. My name is Craig Walker. I live at 1160 Lake Avenue, and I'm a member of the city's Historic Preservation Commission. The way the permit process is being handled for these renovations shows it is a rush job, designed to push this project through without proper consideration or review. The first, the Historic Preservation Commission heard of it was just three weeks ago, a week before Christmas. Calling a special joint meeting of two commissions a week before Christmas to review a project of this size and complexity, then an appeal right before New Year's, when city offices have been closed for four days, is not conducive to transparency or due process of law. Those who wrote the city's landmark ordinance did not want quick action on projects that involve sensitive cultural resources. That is why the landmark resolution for the clubhouse says that the structure cannot be demolished, added to, altered, or moved without twelve months' notice to the Historic Preservation Commission, and requires all proper permits and approvals be obtained. Why staff has allowed this project to come before the city with only one week of notification is beyond me. Even more troubling is that landmarking the clubhouse was a mitigation measure required of the inn by the Environmental Impact Report for the inn's 2005 expansion project. This is the second time the Ojai Valley Inn has tried to undo an agreement that mitigates the impacts of the 2005 renovation and expansion project. You might recall, in 2012, they tried to undo the traffic mitigation measure, requiring that they build housing for their employees. Fortunately, the council stood their ground and insisted that the inn fulfill their obligation to create employee housing. Hopefully, this will be the case here, where the inn agreed as a mitigation measure to landmark the clubhouse and to maintain it with no further alterations. What part of no further alterations to the clubhouse isn't clear? It is unfortunate that the staff report supports the inn's attempt to undo the EIR mitigation measure, and she said that, well, that was complete. But what was completed was the landmarking. Now, you cannot go back and undo the landmarking and reduce the impact of the landmark later on and say, well, it's a whole new situation. That landmarking was to give them the mitigation to go ahead and do all those renovations. But also, they violated the twelve-month noticing requirement, and they are undoing much of the preservation and restoration work that has been done on one of Ojai's most important landmarks. The staff report runs counter to all the findings, conclusions, and recommendations of the Historic Preservation Commission. In addition, the report contains many errors and omissions that should be considered when making your own decision on this appeal. For example, we heard tonight that the standard for altering a landmark is that it significantly alters a historic resource, that it significantly makes these alterations. That may be true for a sequoia review of a non-landmark property, but that is not the case for a landmark property. The standard is whether it materially alters in an adverse manner those physical characteristics that convey the historic significance. Nothing is said in there that has to be major or significant. One glaring omission in the staff report is that it does not present in writing the recommendations, findings, and conclusions of the Historic Preservation Commission and the Planning Commission. The Historic Preservation Ordinance states, quote, "The Historic Preservation Commission's decision shall be in writing, and shall state the findings of fact and reasons relied upon in reaching its decisions," unquote. These written findings should have been prepared by staff and supported by staff in its report. The staff report contains findings by city staff, by the property owners, by their paid consultant, but includes none of the findings and conclusions which led to the denial of the project by the HPC. In fact, the staff report is a hundred and eighty degrees from the commission's finding. To set the record straight, I will present some of the commission's findings that should have formed the basis of the staff report. And I understand this is a de novo hearing, but it still would have been nice to have some of our findings and some of our work and everything presented in that staff report, instead of just relying upon the staff's own interpretation. One of our findings was that the south wall of the clubhouse, facing the breezeway, which is slated to be demolished, is the exterior wall of landmark number nine, as shown in historic photographs. This wall defines the exterior footprint of the clubhouse. The only difference is that the south wall now opens on to the Austin Pierpont-designed breezeway, instead of the original veranda. This exterior wall not only defines the boundaries of the clubhouse, it continues to support the clubhouse roof, and even looks very much like it did ninety years ago. The architectural historian describes the wall as an integral part of the landmark. Why the staff report refers to it as an interior wall of no consequence is a mystery. Demolishing this wall will without doubt adversely impact the architecture and historic significance of the clubhouse. Another finding, contrary to statements and drawings presented by the art, project's architect, the exterior window openings on either side of the east fireplace are original, and I'll show you in a moment photographs taken in 1924, the year after it was built, that clearly show those windows there. My father was an architect, and if you had all the drawings that led up to the final product, the house, you would see that many changes are made along the way, even after the house is under construction. It could have been that Mr. Neff showed those drawings to Edward Libby, and he says, no, we don't want passageways there. We want this to be a lounge area where people can come and sit and talk. We don't know that. All we know is that the original building had windows and not doors. Our finding is that this alteration will also have an adverse impact on the landmark in both design and function, and is not allowable under the landmark agreement. Another finding that we made was that the Austin Pierpont additions, the breezeway and the dining area, are an historic resource in their own right. They were clearly identified as a potential city landmark in the 2002 EIR. Yet, the proposal would involve extensive alterations to this structure, ripping up the tile and removing the breezeway along the south wall of the clubhouse. How can the council grant a categorical exemption to sequoia when the impact on the Pierpont additions have not yet even been studied or reviewed? Finding, even if the landmark could be altered, the alterations must be compatible with the architecture and historic nature of the landmark. The new open floor plan proposed for the NEF Pierpont structure is incompatible with the architecture and history of the clubhouse, and so violates the Secretary of the Interior standards. The original wood framing on the south wall will be replaced by a steel beam. The large wooden beams of the clubhouse interior will now appear to have no visible means of support. The open floor plan is more consistent with mid-century architecture, not NEF's hacienda style. The new footprint would effectively change the structure from being a self-contained lounge to being part of a much larger room, essentially a lobby for the restaurant and the bar. The architectural historian summarizes his report with this statement. It is clear that the property was already substantially altered when it was listed as a landmark. Consequently, the proposed alterations do not appear to significantly impair the property's continued eligibility for designation as a landmark. However, the historian fails to mention, and it's not mentioned anywhere in the report, that many of these alterations were restorations, and that restorations must be preserved in the same way as original materials. I think this would be a good time to show some photographs of the clubhouse, then and now, and you can decide for yourself whether the restored building is so extensively altered that the proposed changes would not affect its significance. So this is the north elevation of the Ojai Valley Country Club, designed by Wallace Neff in 1923. You can see that it looks very similar to what it looked like when it was first built. What's been added off to the far right side is Jimmy's Restaurant that extends out. But other than that, when you look at that facing elevation, it looks pretty similar to the way it was when originally built. Here's a picture of the east elevation. This picture was taken and put into a sales pamphlet in 1924, the year after it was built. And their windows are clearly windows, there's not even a terrace there that a door might have come out on. You see the south wall, over there on the left side, with a veranda sticking out of it, or extending out from it, that was the south portico. But that wall is the same wall that's there today. This is another view of the south elevation. You can see the two windows on the right side on that east elevation, and you can see the veranda coming out. And you can see that they've even just started to make a little breezeway out of it down at the far end. The picture on the left is the same one you just saw, but the picture on the right was made after the Austin Pierpont changes. You can see the breezeway coming in from the right that connected with the hacienda, the first actual hotel rooms that were built and designed by Mr. Pierpont. It extends up right underneath that veranda, and goes under the veranda. So that breezeway, he designed to come up and go through the area that was the veranda, and connect up to the new dining area that you see over on the left side.
Could I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
The south elevation rendering, with the patio in front?
Yes.
Are we looking at the openings in the south wall there?
This, what you see there are the pillars. See how there were the pillars?
I see the pillars, and I'm seeing openings left, center, and right.
On the left is the new dining area that Mr. Pierpont put in in 1934, when he did the renovations. This is what's referred to in your packet as the Pierpont NEF additions, which was the breezeway coming over in the dining area.
On the right. I'm just trying to understand, please.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So I'm not looking at the south elevation?
That is the south.
Of the NEF Lounge?
Yes, it is.
I am.
Yes. That patio is not the same patio that you see today, which is on the north side.
I'm sorry if I'm not being clear. I'm asking past the patio, two pillars?
Yes.
Two columns? And I'm seeing what appear to be either windows or doors?
Yes, windows.
On the south elevation?
Yes. And those are part of the breezeway that Mr. Pierpont put in.
That's the breezeway, not the actual south wall.
Yes, that's right.
That's what I wanted to be clear about.
I'm sorry, yes, the south wall is behind, is on the other side.
Behind that, okay. That's what I wanted to be clear about. Thank you.
Now, this is an interesting picture on the left, because that shows the, that shows the veranda that was originally there, and if you look, you actually see that the tiles are the same. Do you see the tiles on the picture taken in 1924? And the tiles that are there today on the right on the portico? This is the breezeway that Mr. Pierpont put in. And if you look on the right side of the 1924, you see there's the little L kind of pillar, and that was reconstructed there on the wall. That's the south wall of the lounge that you see on the right. And the breezeway goes down through the middle. The lower picture is a picture that's more contemporary, that shows that south wall. That's the same wall that was there, it's just been renovated, and it faces now on to the breezeway, instead of facing on to the veranda. This is a picture on the left, looking the other way, down the breezeway, down towards the hotel part. On the right is the restaurant and the bar. You have the breezeway put in by Mr. Pierpont, and on the left is the south wall that defines the southern part, the southern boundary of the NEF Lounge. There was very careful distinction between these two buildings, so as to maintain the integrity of the lounge. And that's another picture of that opening on the right. The doors have been removed, but it's the same type of openings. This is a look at the interior of the lounge, looking towards the fireplace and the two windows on the east side of the building. And you can see that the current picture over on the right, except for those vinyl chairs, looks pretty similar. Even the openings on the right, that go out once on to the veranda, and now on to the breezeway, are remarkably similar. And all of that wall helps to define the space and form of that lounge. So this is, again, just asking you to honor the design by Mr. Neff, and to maintain the integrity, and not to allow that wall to be torn out and merged and create a bigger Another finding, I'll try to be quick with this. Another finding is that we did not feel that the inn had proven that they would suffer a financial hardship. There's clear regulations in the rules that state what they have to present in the way of evidence, and we didn't receive any of that, and I didn't see that in any of the report that you received as well. The 2006 landmark reports calls out the integrity of the lounge interior as contributing to the historic significance of the lounge. The inn's architectural historian discusses the interior space as part of the building's historic significance. Yet, the staff report concludes that the interior design is not important to the clubhouse's landmark status. Another finding, I'm almost done. The fact that the proposed changes would not have prevented the structure from being nominated as a landmark is irrelevant. If only ten of the arches remained in the arcade, we would probably still landmark the arcade. But that wouldn't mean that someone could come after it was landmarked with a proposal to remove all but ten of those arches. So it's almost irrelevant, once the building is landmarked, to say, well, would it have been landmarked anyway if these changes had been made and it wasn't a landmark? Of course, we would have landmarked it, but we wouldn't want to see anything removed. Also, prior alterations do not justify further alterations once building is landmarked. The Secretary of the Interior Standards for Preservation states, and I quote, "The standards for preservation require retention of the greatest amount of historic fabric, along with the building's historic form, features, and detailing as they have evolved over time." Again, consider the arcade. It's undergone extensive renovations over the years. The four easterly arches weren't even there when it was built, they were added ten years later. The three arches on the west end of the arcade were very much renovated, long after the arcade was put up. It used to be a livery, and the whole design of those arches changed. The whole building went under extensive renovation in 1989 to bring it up to earthquake safety. And yet, none of those, I think, would justify a proponent coming in and saying they wanted to completely change it and revise it and remove arches. We would say, no, at the point, it was landmarked. This is what we landmark, and you're going to have to show that they're adverse, that it would adverse, that wouldn't adversely affect the historic significance if those changes were made. So anyway, that's, that's my points, and I hope you will preserve this building. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Walker. Does anybody have any questions for any of the commissioners, before we move on to public comment?
I have a question.
Yes. Councilmember?
We are, we're being asked to kind of struggle with the whole issue of appropriate adaptive reuse. It seems that's one of the questions. And Mr. McCready and Mr. Walker, I wonder if either one of you would like to volunteer what you think are appropriate guidelines for considering adaptive reuse of landmark buildings? buildings? Obviously, health and safety issues, there's pretty much no debate. If you have to have an ADA accessibility to a bathroom, you need to make a change. When it comes to the functionality of the building, could you, it's a very broad question, but I'm interested in what your feel would be appropriate guidelines for evaluating adaptive reuse. And Ms. McCready, you have extensive expertise in the area of evolving uses for landmark motels, and I'm interested in.
I would just, I would just say that in the case of the Hotel del Coronado, there were many areas that we renovated that had to do with food and beverage, and we didn't touch any of the historic structure or elements in the hotel. And I understand the space planning issues that this applicant has with the current layout, but we can't solve their space planning issues on the back of historic preservation. It's very simple.
Thank you. I just wanted your opinion.
Can I just add that if you go to the, down to the Riverside Inn, which is well-preserved, one of the first examples of hotels on the Mission Revival style, they've actually embraced their history, and they've embraced the historic look of their building. And so even though it doesn't have a modern, open floor plan where people can move freely throughout, they've, they've made it an attraction of the place to emphasize that history. So I would hope that the designers of the Ojai Valley Inn could put their minds to it and come up with a way that they could preserve this hacienda-style, very historic building, not just for the inn, but for the people of Ojai and for the state of California and the country, that this is one of the first examples of Wallace Neff's work. He won an award for it. It really launched his career, the confidence that Mr. Libby had in him. It was sort of a joint effort between Mr. Libby and Mr. Neff. And I think that, that all that needs to be taken into consideration and not say, well, we need to have more people moving through this area, and so we have to take out walls. And that, it was the mitigation for all of these changes that were made in 2005 was to create a landmark out of this room and out of the structure. And then now to say, well, that no longer meets our needs, so we don't really want it to be a landmark, or we want you to alter the landmark significantly, is just something that shouldn't be allowed, and I hope you won't.
I do have some questions for you two regarding the findings that you found, if you may. The first question is, you referred to the guidelines established for the review of the work permit to the lounge was that the clubhouse should not be altered further. I think that's pretty clear.
Yes.
But the second part, I haven't heard any interpretation in terms of what you think that the HPC should review any proposed alteration efforts.
Well, I think that you could alter it in the sense that maybe you would restore it further. So it might be possible that the owners of a landmark, that that was said, could say, we want to add these elements that we've discovered were in the original, and they could bring those to us and say, would you want an alteration that would return it further to what it was? And we would probably go along with that. It is possible that in the interior, because it is the interior, and by the interior I don't mean that wall which defines the exterior of the building, it's possible that they could come and say, would it be possible for us to add this wall or to put a little something here that would make it more usable to us? That's happened to us before. The owner of the Libby Estate up on Foothill came and wanted to redesign a bathroom down below, and he said, would you be okay with that alteration? I mean, obviously, we can't insist people have bathrooms from the 1900s. So there are some leeways that we can have, particularly on the interior of the building. So I don't see this big conflict between those two statements.
And so, as I understand, your position would be that the items listed to be protected was the exterior of the lounge, even though that's inside a building right now, that wall, it still defines that lounge?
It defines the footprint of the lounge, and they often speak, and the Secretary of the Interior is about preserving the form of the building, the spatial relationships of the building. And I think that that, that southern wall, regardless of whether it opens onto a veranda or a breezeway, is important for defining that footprint of the, of it. Like Darwin said, it was meant to be a self-contained lounge where people came and sat and held conversations and had drinks. It wasn't meant to be a lobby for a bar.
And then furthermore, even though that wall has been altered and the TV set has been put in there and stuff like that, that doesn't, in your point of view, that doesn't really affect the status of that wall just because it was touched, there's been air vents put in there, et cetera?
Right. No, that doesn't, because you obviously have to bring up your air conditioning, your bathroom fixtures, I mean, stuff like that. We had to renovate the arcade to meet earthquake standards, and there are things like that that you do need to do and are perfectly allowable. But they do need to be reviewed to make sure that they don't, that they don't harm the basic look and feel of the building.
All right. Any further questions? Yes, Councilmember Haney.
Are there, are there two types of these landmarks? And I'm just gonna, I'll say, there's a stagnant type of landmarks, and then there's a living type. Stagnant meaning, I remember when I went up and saw Fort Sumner up in Sacramento. It's, it's a structure that is preserved, but it's not living, it's not changing, it's not growing, it's just a structure that sits up there, and you walk around this fort, and you get to envision what it was like back in the day. Whereas you have a structure here that's actually living, it's actually growing, it's changing. And if I've read it right, it's been modified nine times already or eight times? So that's telling me that it's a living, breathing landmark.
Right. Some of those renovations were restorations of the building, and they were made, a lot of those changes were made back before it became a landmark. I think when it became a landmark, it takes on a little bit different status, and you have to look at it more critically than you would if it was just a historic structure. We get those all the time at our commission where a building is a historic structure, but it's not a landmark. And we comment on it, we give the people advice on what they might want to do, but there isn't the same kind of level of protection that you have for a landmark.
So, so just going along with that thought, I read here, I think it was 48-05, and it's part of the HPC's responsibilities or duties. And one of them is advise and assist property owners regarding physical and financial aspects of preservation, renovations, rehabilitations, and reuse. So the question is, they made, I'm hearing that they made an agreement in 2006 when that structure was landmarked? My question is, were, when it was landmarked, were there anything said to the Crown family that said what they could do in the future, what they couldn't do in the future, what we would like to see them do in the future if they did anything? Was there, I don't imagine you were, you were there, but, and I don't know if we have that on record, but that would just be a question is, is they've agreed to something, but they don't know what they agreed to. And I would think that that is maybe something on us as a city as to when we make these agreements to landmark facilities, that we're telling them what they can and can't do from this day forward.
But I think like with any kind of planning decision that's made by city government, the applicant comes with a proposal that they want to do. We've had a couple of people that own landmarks that have come and said they want to build six, seven-foot walls around their landmarks. And there was nothing in the landmark report that said you can't build that wall, but it just is that we have to preserve the look and the feel and the historic integrity of that building. And if they come to us with a proposal to do that, then we have to evaluate it. Will that be detrimental to the, to the historic significance of this building?
One other thing in Section I, it says, develop guidelines, and this is again for the HPC, to develop specific design guidelines for alterations, construction, or removal of landmarked properties and structures within historical districts and land sites. So again, I'm just, just asking, do we have anything on that on record? Do we have anything to present to any future individual or entity that's going to have a facility landmarked? Do we have anything that's going to help them to understand what they're getting into? And if they do agree, what they're agreeing to?
I'm not, I can't tell you about this particular building. I know that it's a large, multipurpose room. I've been in there on some days when there's been little conversation areas set up where people have been having drinks in the bar. I've been in there sometimes where they've had music playing in the bar very successfully. I was up there not too long ago, and they used it as a buffet where people would get their food and would, would go out onto the patio. So it's a large, multipurpose room, I think there's lots of possibilities for its use. I think that when you come and you say, we want to take out a wall, and we want to take out these windows, that's a significant change, and it should be revisited by an EIR at the very least and not just say, well, you can, you can take out that whole wall. Or that you can change the look of it, as if you would take out all the supports for the beams, it will look like a postmodern building with these old beams going across, and then there's no visible supports. And when I was up there, I tried to imagine, I said, well, how are those beams going to be supported? Well, I asked at the commission, it wasn't anywhere in the report at the commission meeting, and they said, well, we're going to put a big steel beam across there, and that will hold it up. So I wish that you could go up there, and this wasn't such a rush job, that we could give it a sober hearing. You could go up, really take a look at it, and ask yourself, is this going to, you know, materially alter something that's an important landmark for Ojai?
Well, thank you. Does any other council member have any question? Moving on, Don Teating.
Thank you. Good evening. Don Teating, North Signal Street. I hope that you have read my December 23 comment letter outlining my concerns with this project, and also have received letters from two preeminent Southern California archaeologists contained within your meeting materials. One being from Mr. Ronald May of Legacy 106, and one from Mr. John Foster of Greenwood and Associates. To the back of your handout, I have also attached emails received from an experienced SEQA attorney, Mr. Kevin Johnson, and another respected archaeologist with extensive experience in Chumash archaeology, Dr. Chester King. Please bear with me in my presentation, as it is somewhat changed from what I've handed out, given the significant new information presented tonight about this project and its scope. I will begin with Ojai and its values. Ojai values its community, its heritage, and its history. Its Chumash name means moon, and it is time to shine some light on the darkness of this project proposal and the city's processing thereof. The current project la, recorded, excuse me, the current project record lacks factual evidence to allow for informed decision-making by members of the public as well as the city council. Not only was the original staff report void of information about the scope of the project, but potential impacts to cultural resources identified in the 2002 Final Environmental Impact Report are not addressed, nor is the department's compliance with the Ojai General Plan that requires conservation of cultural resources. And now there is confusion about the current project. My understanding was, what was brought before us was a revised project based on the city's staff report that says it was substantially revised, and my understanding that was that this was not given appropriate public review or review by the Historic Preservation Commission and Planning Commission. Additionally, numerous procedural missteps have been made. An exemption from environmental review under SEQA is recommended by city staff without factual evidence that this project will not impact cultural resources. The current project lacks appropriate information, shortcuts the environmental review procedure, and public participation, appears, appeared to have substantially changes to the project scope midstream without public notice of the new scope, nor were minutes made available from previous public hearings on the project. The city council has the authority, obligation, and the means to correct these missteps. Let's first take a look at the setting we know and love as Ojai. Ojai has invested in its historic, historical culture as a means of appreciation for its fair bearers and recognizes the inherent value in its history. The City of Ojai supports the Ojai Valley Museum, and the Historic Preservation Commission stands to promote and protect Ojai's heritage. This is a strong acknowledgement that Ojai's prehistoric and historic cultures are part of its identity. It is what makes Ojai unique and attracts visitors. Therefore, it is not a surprise that the Historic Preservation Commission and the Planning Commission both voted to protect the historic Neff Lounge, as did the commissions and the city council, when the Neff Lounge was designated Ojai's historic landmark number nine in 2006. The Ojai Valley Inn also recognizes the value of historic designation and promotes itself as a historic hotel of America. On the other hand, City, Ojai city staff, who are relatively new to the community, appear unaware of the intrinsic value that Ojai residents place on its history and are dismissive of concerns of the Historic Preservation Commission and community members. This public participation is required by both California Civil Procedure and the California Environmental Quality Act, otherwise known as SEQA. These are just some of the problems with this project. Now let's take a look at the project itself. Firstly, the scope of the original project is incomplete, inaccurate, and misleading. This is the project that was presented to the public and the Historic Preservation and Planning Commissions on December 11. The City of Ojai administrative report dated December 5, 2014, signed by Ms. Kathleen Wald, is insufficient and does not adequately nor accurately describe the scope of the project and its potential environmental impacts. Potential for adverse impact to historical resources must be identified and evaluated before determination of SEQA applicability can be made. The city's administrative report for work permit 14-18, one, provides no meaningful description of the project's site or the cultural or environmental setting; two, lacks discussion of general plan consistency with the cultural resource section of the conservation element; and three, lacks discussion of possible impacts to potential archaeological resources. Evidence of potential impact to cultural resources at the Ojai Valley Inn is supported by the 2002 Environmental Impact Report. This report, which was certified by the city council, asserts the potential for undetected archaeological and/or cultural resources to be uncovered due to grading and construction activities at the inn. The current project involves these activities around the swimming pool in addition to construction of new cabanas. Excavation activities into an undiscovered resource could destroy portions of the site, disturb its integrity and context, unearth human remains, or impair the scientific value of the resource. This represents a potentially significant impact. The Cultural Resources Section of the Narrative Explanation of Checklist further discusses the potential for prehistoric and historical cultural resources and provides recommendations for review by qualified professionals. In addition, the January 9, 2002 letter from the Native American Heritage Commission In addition, the January 9, 2002 letter from the Native American Heritage Commission outlines measures, quote, "to adequately assess and mitigate project-related impacts of archaeological resources," unquote. It is also noted that the Cultural Resource Investigation reported in the 2002 Final Environmental Impact Report consisted of an archaeological records search and surface survey of only the project impact areas proposed in 2002. The scope of the current project relative to the 2002 investigation is unclear. It is unclear if the impact area is the same or whether further investigation is required. It is also unclear if this project falls under the umbrella of the 2002 EIR. If it falls under the 2002 EIR, SEQA requires review to assess potential new environmental impacts and changes in regulations. As the 2002 EIR is nearly 13 years old, standard of practice in the industry includes an updated archaeological resources record searched by a qualified archaeologist. These concerns were brought before the Planning Commission on December 11 and were dismissed by city staff stating that this project does not meet the city's thresholds for cultural resource significance. Why then was environmental review for cultural resources done in the inn in 2002? And how do they explain the findings of potentially significant impacts to cultural resources on the property? Preeminent archaeologists have also expressed concern about the need for appropriate environmental review for this project. Mr. Ronald May of Legacy 106, an archaeology and historic consulting firm, states that the 2002 certified EIR mandates a very clear scoping of all earth-disturbing activities, that the proposed work, as described, constitute direct and indirect impacts to cultural resource setting and potential archaeological sites, and that this project cannot be exempted from environmental review. Mr. John Foster, whose cultural resource firm has more than 60 years of experience in Ventura County, questions this project's scope, definitions used, and states, quote, "While it is true in the case of a void created by excavating a swimming pool that there might be nothing left in the cavity, it does not mean that the adjoining area has been disturbed, nor that the remaining archaeological data have lost all information. The determination of those conditions could only be made by a qualified archaeologist," unquote. And Dr. Chester King, a preeminent expert in Chumash archaeology, requests the rejection of a categorical exemption and environmental review of the potential archaeological resources in the project area. Under SEQA Guideline Section 1506.4, the city shall consider the views held by members of the public. If there is a question in determining the significant potential impact, the city must follow proper environmental review procedures. The city has now received requests from the Historic Preservation Commission members, local Chumash tribe, the public, and expert comments by preeminent archaeologists as well as a SEQA attorney recommending further review of the environmental impacts of this Moving on to the project presented before us tonight, there's some confusion. Admittedly, I'm still a little confused. Not only did the original project lack proper scope and environmental review, we are now presented with what appeared to be a revised project, void of any description of scope, and the information from the city provided appears to be misleading. It feels like the Community Development Department is playing a shell game with this project. The city administrative report states that the scope of remodeling is, quote, "substantially less than the original applications denied by the Historic Preservation Commission and Planning Commission." This is not an appeal. This is a new project. It should follow the city's review procedures. It should be sent back to the Historic Preservation Commission for their determination of whether the proposed changes might damage the architecturally-defining features that make it historic. The Historic Preservation Commission must be given the opportunity to clarify the types of remodeling allowed under the Secretary of the Interior standards for the treatment of historic properties. A revised project must be remanded back to the commission for a vote. City staff December 17 administrative report is misleading and suggests a flawed landmark process in 2006 and current economic hardship, which are both irrelevant to this project. The 2006 record reflects the proper steps were taken, there were no objections, and the city council acted accordingly. There is no factual evidence that the proposed renovations to the lounge, pool, and main lobby will improve the inn's financial standing. Additionally, reference made to City Municipal Code regarding economic hardship considerations may be misrepresented as this regulation is in reference to resale or value of the property. It is further noted that minutes of the December 11 joint meeting of the Historic Preservation and Planning Commissions, at which the NEF Lounge renovation was denied, are neither provided nor available. In addition, the Community Development Director improperly makes reference to reuse in this context, and the historian's report relied on by city staff is paid for by the applicant and is thereby fraught with a legal and financial conflict of interest. Further, as is the case with cultural resources, city staff has no expertise to conclude that this project will not impact historical resources and thereby recommend exemption. This is a job for the Historic Preservation Commission and other experts. As noted, issues raised by the city's staff report are irrelevant. What is relevant are the missteps in this process. No environmental review of cultural resources has been given. There's been a short cutting of the environmental review procedure and public disclosure through use of a categorical exemption. Seemingly, there has been substantial changes to project's scope midstream without proper public notice of the new scope and records from previous public hearings and not sending the revised project back to the Historic Preservation Commission and Planning Commission. City staff has recommended approval of the revised project under a Class I categorical exemption from SEQA. This means that city staff assert that the project will not have potential adverse impacts on historical or cultural resources. Yet, conditions of approval reflect 2002 Final EIR mitigation measures to reduce or eliminate potential impacts to cultural resources. These conditions of approval do not remedy the omission of appropriate consideration of environmental consequences by the city. A project cannot be exempted from environmental review asserting no environmental impact and then require conditions to reduce impact on the environment. The current project must be examined in light of the whole record, including the 2002 Final Environmental Impact Report for renovations at the Ojai Valley Inn, which reflected potentially significant environmental impacts. SEQA is not a game of monopoly. You cannot pass go and collect a categorical exemption for a project that already has been determined to have a significant effect on the environment. The city must take the appropriate steps to protect the environment. Interestingly, the city administrative report, resolutions, and recommendations contain no reference to SEQA guidelines or statutes allowing exemption of this project. Ojai's Municipal Code, Section 4-8.16, requires findings of fact and reason to reach a decision. City documents do not adequately describe the project, its potential environmental impact, or rationale for recommended exemption given the potential impact of this project. As stated by a land use attorney and SEQA attorney with over 30 years of experience, the city appears to have no factual basis for the conclusions that there will be no impact on significant resources and the use of a categorical exemption from environmental review in this context is inappropriate. Public participation and informed decision-making are at the heart of environmental protections and are required by SEQA and California civil law. This project is void of necessary information, is misleading and inaccurate, and appeared to have been substantially revised without adequate information, proper public noticing of review, or review by the Historic Preservation Commission or Planning Commission. You can correct these current procedural errors now. It's time to do the right thing for Ojai and for the community. I urge you not to make a permanent mistake that will cost the community valued nonrenewable resources and continue the precedence of ignoring cultural resource protections. Given the status of the project before you tonight, I respectfully request that you indefinitely continue these work permits to allow city staff to correctly advertise the scope of the project and its potential environmental impacts. Two, I request a project's scope that is accurate and complete and that you require city staff to appropriately identify, evaluate, and disclose all potential environmental impacts to historic and cultural resources. This should include independent professional review by a qualified architectural historian and a registered professional archaeologist to assess potential impacts to historic and cultural resources with consultant costs reimbursed by the Ojai Valley Inn and consultation with the local Chumash tribe. Three, I ask that you require the city staff to comply with SEQA. And four, require proper noticing of all activities. Ojai values its community, Chumash tribal members, its heritage and its history, and requires the protection of cultural resources. On November 11, a city council member stated that we don't have to wait for protection of cultural resources. Let's start tonight. I echo the words of an Ojai Valley Inn representative this evening, saying, "Time is of the essence." The city council has the authority, obligation, and the means to ensure Ojai's community values are upheld, cultures are respected, and that laws are followed. Thank you for your time, and I'd like to reserve any remaining time for rebuttal if needed.
Thank you, Ms. Teeding. And again, I just want to stress, we're going to be moving on with our public comments. And if you do agree with some of the speakers that have come before, if you may please state that you approve their points and keep your comments to a timely manner. Pat Tumamaya.
My name is Patrick Tumamaya. I live at 992 El Camino Corto in Ojai. I want to thank Mr. Lara, council members, for allowing me to speak tonight. You know, being one of the residents here and being an indigenous people to the Ojai Valley, it's, I've seen a lot go on in this town, and you'll have to excuse me if I'm a little nervous right now, but the idea is that this is a stepping stone to see the city council do the right thing and implement the right protocol and procedures in protecting our cultural and archaeological resources here in the valley. It means a lot to me and our family, and it represents the justice and the fairness of all people that are indigenous to this area. And I do appreciate, I do appreciate being hired as an archaeological monitor and the offering of being an archaeological monitoring in the past for the Crown family, but I'm not an archaeologist. I'm a consultant. I'm a native monitor, and I'm not a certified archaeologist, so it's not up to me to see how the laws are protected and how they're proceeded. It's up to you and the decisions you make to see that the proper protocol is being addressed here. And I ask of you to do the right thing. And part of the whole situation too as well is getting policy and standards within the city ordinance is another thing. To declare, you know, a site, a sensitive area, and allowing 300 feet as a buffer zone is outrageous. I mean, that's unheard of. I receive several letters that pertain to cultural and archaeological resources all over the county, not only from Ventura, but Malibu, LA, and as well as Santa Barbara, that every notice that I receive generally considers a sensitive area at least a quarter of a mile as considered a sensitive site area when it's brought forth. And to declare it as 300 feet as a buffer or somewhere in between is outrageous. There's 5,820 feet in a mile, so if you break that down to a quarter, it's well over 300 feet. It's unheard of. So I would like the city council to consider a larger buffer zone to try to protect our cultural resources. And as Mr. Walker said, the integrity of the inn and the historic of it, it's no different than somebody taking an artifact off the ground and sticking it in their pocket. Once they do that, they're taking the integrity from a site, right from the get-go. Because what they do is they're picking it up, they're putting it in their pocket, and they're putting it on their shelves. That's destroying a site. That's destroying the integrity of a site. So let's do the right thing. Let's protect these sites. Let's come to council and consult and work together with us so we can better protect the resources in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Alizdar, you have to help me with your...
My name's Alastair Coyn, pronounced just like Penny. I'm a longtime Ojai resident. Thank you for this opportunity to comment tonight. I support the Ojai Valley Inn and its contributions to Ojai's tax dollars. I just want them to follow the rules under SEQA that everyone else has to follow. They should be following the rules from their own 2002 EIR. We have an impressive amount of Crown family staff here today, but I really doubt that they were not aware of some of the other items that were going to be appealed tonight until this morning, as was originally stated, because most of that data was up on the city's website on Tuesday, the 23rd of December. Mr. Crown is right about pulling the project if it's denied tonight because it can't come back under California law for 12 months. Please send this revised project back to the Historic Preservation Commission and the Planning Commission for full and proper environmental review. There was no scope of work provided for the project approved by the Planning Commission on December 11, nor are there any minutes provided for the December 11 meeting whose decision is being appealed tonight. A registered professional archaeologist must make the determination on cultural resources impacts, not Kathleen Wald. She is not qualified. The staff's categorical exemption for this project has conditions attached, which means there are in fact clear project impacts. You have received letters in the last week, including today, asking for full environmental and cultural resources review of this project under the 2002 Ojai Valley Inn EIR from three registered professional archaeologists with between them over 150 years of experience in their fields. Any earthmoving requires analysis for cultural resources under SEQA, according to the 2002 EIR at the inn. Much of this mess is attributable to your city planners who readily hand out categorical exemptions as if they were candy for developers. Your city staff clearly needs proper training on SEQA and certainly on cultural resources, which to them must appear to be something from another planet. Maybe they need to be replaced before the city looks into writing its own long overdue Cultural Resources Section of the zoning ordinance beginning next month. If they don't get it yet, I don't see how a month will make much difference. Other jurisdictions perform the work of cultural resource protection quite well as a matter of course. The county of Santa Barbara is a notable example of this. On December 2, City Manager Rob Clark stated that the City of Ojai could not move on preparing cultural resource protections for the zoning ordinance before January 27, as these matters take time and staff reports must be written. It's interesting to note that city staff could readily prepare a lengthy staff report in about five working days so that this appeal by the Ojai Valley Inn could be concluded a week or so before the inn closes for a week to perform its remodeling project. This timing has not gone unnoticed. Cultural resource protection has been neglected for far too long by the City of Ojai. Many of us are here tonight to demonstrate that those days are over. We are watching now, all the time. We're not going to fade back into the woodwork. The City of Ojai, one way or another, is going to start protecting its cultural resources properly. So I ask you, how can you tonight, as... So I ask you, how can you tonight, as a city council, as our council, grant a categorical exemption in the face of archaeological expertise and experience under SEQA, and then next month return and design new cultural resources ordinances for the city? Thank you very much.
Matt Jakins? He left. David Mason?
David Mason, Albusaia Road. I thought I would lighten up this meeting tonight a little bit. And this is the story of a room, not just any room, but without a doubt, the most famous room in the entire Ojai Valley. When the Ojai Valley Inn was built, this room was the center of all activities. Then during the Second World War, the room known as the Neff Lounge was used for headquarters for Camp, Camp Oak, the army base that had taken over the inn, and later when the Navy was in control of the property. After the war and back in private ownership, the room once more regained its popularity. It was the scene of a reception for the former First Lady Eleanor Roosevelt when she was staying at the inn to promote her March of Dimes. In the same room, Madame Chenault, often with Madame Shenkai Scheck, would yearly receive the surviving members of the Flying Tigers. They were a group of American military and civilians, given the mission to protect China against the Japanese forces. They became known as the Chinese Air Force under General Chenault. The beautiful actress Jane Mansfield was also there to meet the boys, as she was always Miss Flying Tigers. Bob Hope and Bing Crosby entertained, along with many musical concerts. In the winters, there was a roaring fire in both fireplaces. It was a cozy room, for sure. Nancy and Ronnie Reagan found comfort in the lounge, talking and making plans for the future, probably not expecting to be making plans for being the President of the United States. At almost the same time, Reagan's ex-wife, Jane Wyman, would be found in the lounge with her dear friends and owners of the inn, Loretta Young and Irene Dunn, along with the beautiful Rita Hayworth. Over the years, the room was badly mistreated, and in the 50s, it was increased in size by a modern addition, not at all in keeping with the style of the architecture. It became a very sad-looking room. Then, with much joy and excitement, the room was restored, back to its original, not as close as possible. It once more was the grand room that Mr. Libby had enjoyed in 1923 when he entertained Mr. and Mrs. William Randolph Hearst in that very room. After the 1924 restoration, the National Trust for Historic Preservation deemed it to be eligible as one of their historic hotels of America, quite an honor, as they only selected 250 hotels in the whole United States. This gave the inn wonderful advertising all over the world. The National Trust, in writing about the building with the Neff Lounge, said, "They have faithfully maintained the authenticity, sense of place, and architectural integrity." They also stated it is now eligible for the listing on the Registry of Historic Places. This room today is beautiful, historic, and deserves all the praise and honors that it has received.
Thank you. Julie Tumamaya? Bill Miley?
My family and I have lived here for 46 years. And I've seen a lot happen during that time. So I have some casual comments I want to make first, and then I have a few things that I wrote. Relative to the Arcade, it was really great when, finally, it was approved for reconstruction, earthquake support, and it looked like it has looked for a long time. Structurally sound, architecturally perfect, I guess, but people don't come to the Arcade because of its structure, other than we like it and we're going to come here. But the functionality of the Arcade is in the stores, and the stores adapt and change as they need to, to be economically, publicly viable. And I think that's really important. The Arcade is on a public highway. The Neff Lounge is on private property, which is open to the public. I came here prepared to ask you to turn it down. I've changed my mind. The reasons I was asking you to turn it down was because there are no minutes available for the Historical Preservation Commission when they did their thing, nor the Planning Commission. I thought that was important, but I don't think it's important anymore. In fact, you might be interested in knowing that there are no minutes available for either of those commissions for the last six months. Go to the website. It's June of 2014, and I think that's an issue that you should pay attention to. Okay. I support the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa now, and in the past, I publicly supported, I was publicly supportive of their major remodeling, including the development agreement for housing. And just as an interesting note, on the day that the Planning Commission packets were to be mailed out in 2002, or whenever it was, the current, the then-current Community Development Director had forgotten to include the development agreement in the packet, and I had seen that. So I called him up and said, "Hey, you've forgotten something." "Oh yeah, I did." Okay, so I do pay attention. One of my comments is about the protection of cultural resources that's been spoken about for, by a number of people, and some of my colleagues may not feel I'm supporting them, but I think I am. So Earth is going to be moved to dig out the pool and reconstruct a new one with all of the amenities around it. And obviously, the site has been, is a cultural resource-sensitive area, and cultural protection needs to be required. But I was looking at the proposed design review permit, development agreements, community development agreements, and Item 8 says that Section A and B, and I could read it to you, but you can read it yourself, covers that. They're going to have an archaeologist on site. If there are human remains found, they'll bring in more. A and B seems to cover that really well, and I have no problem with that. So I think personally, that is good and that meets the law, in my opinion. My colleagues may say not, but I think it does. Regarding the landmark status of buildings and our objects, I have a personal illustration I crafted, I'd like to share you, share with you. I was born in 1932, about eight years after, I understand, Walter Neff designed this structure. And he was like two years into his architectural practice. And Austin Pierpont was involved in further designs two years after I was born, in 1934. And the Neff Lounge was given a landmark designation, as I read it, 82 years after it came into existence of its total 90 years. Is that right? This is 2006. Okay. So if my body was given a landmark designation with the same ratio, it would have happened when I was 74. And there would have been restrictions on how my body, how it looked, could change. That's the way I understand it. But as I've aged, 75, 76, 77, 82, I need to change my ability to function by adopting new ways to run my body. Otherwise, I might look the same as I did when I was 74, but my ability to function, to be functionally alive and dynamically able to compete in this society would be poor, and I would be in decline. I wouldn't be here, probably. Okay? I mean, I'd be home watching you, guys on TV. Okay? So, in my opinion, the inn needs to be able to keep their facility functionally competitive, economically viable, just like I keep my body functional as I get older, even though I was designated as a landmark in 74. So what is the purpose of a landmark designation? Got to make sure I get that right. On private commercial property, which if not allowed to modify, to be modified, for making the structure people viable. We have a jail, that's a landmark, maybe, I'm not sure, down there, but it's locked up and it's not viable. People aren't going there. They're not staying there. They're not eating and sleeping there. It's a building that has a structure that's the same as it was a long time ago, but it doesn't work. Denying the approval may keep the structure looking the same as it is in 2006, which most of us, in my opinion, will never see. I've never been there. I've been here a long time. But if you deny it, it may contribute to the eventual financial decline and loss of guest Why do people stay at the inn? Do they come here to see the Neff Lounge as it was structured years ago? In my opinion, I'll bet they don't. They go, from what I heard, they go to the sports bar for their recreation. I believe Mr. Crown when he said, "No, no one or few people stay in the space known as the Neff Lounge." And that's not good for the inn, and it's not good for the city of Ojai. I remember years and years ago, when there were a few more, when there were other city managers and other planning directors, it came as kind of a surprise that one-third of our budget was coming from the Ojai Valley Inn, and without that, we'd be a dead city. We wouldn't be able to pay people what we do and do the things they want to do. So I urge your council to approve this project, so it will remain as the Neff Lounge, basically, but it will be functionally alive for the inn and for the benefit of the city of Ojai. Now, and in the many years ahead, many, many years ahead, and unfortunately, more than my life will have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Lanny Claver?
I make one very quick comment on the specific issue of minutes.
Yes.
That's it.
Councilmember Wyer.
I do think Mr. Miley points out an issue. Historic commission minutes have not been posted since April 10th, 2014. Planning commission minutes have not been posted since June 8th of 2014. That's approximately, by my count, 13 meetings that are on public videos that we don't have minutes posted on the website for, and five dates, including two special meeting events for the historic commission. We got an issue there, I think that we need to address, in my opinion.
Lanny?
I'm Lanny Coffer. I live on Ensonall Avenue in Miners Oaks. First, I want to thank you all for your service to our community, especially during this time of year. It's appreciated. Like the previous speaker, I'm relatively new to Ojai. I just moved here 45 years ago, so I can't speak to a lot of this historical stuff that happened before I was born. However, in the short time that I've been here, I've come to really love and appreciate this valley, Ojai, it's, especially its cultural resources, the Chumash heritage, as well as the beautiful mountains and native plants that surround our valley. So I only have two comments. The first is within my area of expertise, and that is the native plants. I've been to the inn a number of times in my years here, and it's a beautiful facility, but in my opinion, because I do study native plants and I lead hikes and walks interpreting our native plants, in my opinion, it's severely lacking in native vegetation, which, especially now with the severe drought that we're in, native plants provide an opportunity for drought-tolerant landscaping, and there are many, many beautiful plants of the thousands that we have around us in our natural landscape. So I've been aware of that in the past, and that wasn't why I came to the meeting tonight, but when I saw the photographs of the proposed plants, and I realize that's not necessarily part of this historical discussion, but it was in tonight's presentation, when I saw the photos, I didn't see a single native plant there, and so I would like to urge the inn and the city in approving projects in the future to consider the importance of substituting some of these African and Australian and European plants that are, of course, beautiful, but are very water-intensive with some of our natives, and there are many people in the area who can provide some expertise on that. Secondly, I just want to state that I am in agreement with those who feel that there needs to be adequate respect and protection of cultural resources on this project and on all the projects in Ojai. If it's true, as I heard recently, that there is nothing in the Ojai zoning ordinance specifically protecting cultural resources, then that's certainly an error. Perhaps I misunderstood something, but I, I'm in agreement with those also who have said that it appears, from the nature of the project that's being presented tonight, that this meeting really should have been happening in front of the Historical Preservation Commission in what would appear to me to be the proper sequence. So we just wanted to say that much, and thank you for the opportunity to say that.
Thank you. Larry Wild?
The leg that went to sleep. Larry Wild, 810 Kenyatta Street, Ojai, California. Bill, I'm taking you to the inn. I'll buy you a beer or a health drink, but I'd be happy to drive you there. I have lots of friends in the audience here, many of which may not agree with me on this. I'm not going to touch the Wallace Neff Inn. I'm not, I don't have the expertise to go there. I'm going to talk more, a little bit more self-serving, not self-serving just for me, self-serving for anybody and everybody who works in this valley, that makes a living from this valley, whether it's a real estate broker, whether it's an architect... whether it's an architect, whether it's Suzanne's Restaurant, whether it's hotels on round two, three, and four after they stay at the inn, whether it's any small business, most of which are dying in downtown Ojai, barely surviving, they thank the inn. You guys have no, you do have an idea what the inn does for this community. It's unbelievable. And the blood that we're extracting to this applicant, again, is just beyond me. I don't represent the inn. This is not self-serving to me at all. I'm here just to say, come on, enough is enough. Give this guy, this poor group, who's been here and just, and I watched it on TV a month ago, and watched every bit of what I heard again tonight. And it was great, and I learned an awful lot. But give him the application and the permit, and please do it in an expeditious way with a smile. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. That's the end of the cards that I have for a public comment. I'm going to refer back to my colleagues to see if they want to take a five-minute break, just to stretch their legs and let the inn, if they have any final comments. Do you guys want to take a break, or do you want to proceed? No? Well, I guess. No, I don't hear consensus, so I'm going to move on then, if everybody wants to. And I want to bring back the inn to see if you guys had any further comments due to the public comment.
We know it's late. I think, and we'll be very brief, but I think Mr. Delvec, you're the expert with regard to some of these issues that you were asking about and were being addressed in the public comments. So perhaps we should let Bill speak to a couple of them, just to make sure there's clarity. And then we'll make a couple of, two minutes worth of closing comments.
Mayor and councilmembers, Bill Delvec, again. First of all, I must say I'm both impressed with your investment of time and the quality of the community participants here. I go to a lot of these hearings and haven't heard any shouting or people pointing fingers. I've heard people speak to the issues. Clearly, we have a different point of view than some of the speakers, and I'd like to touch on a few of those matters. One very simple thing. I actually am just a little confused. If the breezeway has acquired significance over time, how is it still an exterior wall? I mean, we can't celebrate the breezeway and say it's now part of the building and then say, oh, just forget that. It's still an exterior wall. I don't get that. I mean, and I don't want to be too facetious at this late hour, but query whether the breezeway ever would have been approved under these standards when it came forward at the time. So I think the comments about letting buildings evolve are very important. You know, the 2000 EIR said there could be potential significant impacts, so there was a monitor. There weren't any impacts. The impact range didn't change now. We have a monitor, and we're going to have a monitor. And your staff suggested, and we agree with it. So I think too much has been made about the 2000 EIR. It really did evaluate a different project. The designation of the lounge as a result of that has occurred. That was carried out. The question now before you is, under your code, are changes allowed? And I think, Mayor, you've asked the question two or three times about what does it mean to say there shall be no changes, and then the commission can review changes. We're regulated by your code. We're regulated by your preservation ordinance. That ordinance allows for a process, for approval, and we can't be denied that right to have a hearing on, and hopefully, an approval on the process. We truly urge the council to vote with us, but as your attorney will tell you, you have every right to not require us to have to wait twelve months to come back, should you have questions. We need a decision tonight, but the comment that says we'll never be able to do anything for twelve months, I think, is misplaced. We are following the SEQA rules. We are following SEQA rules. We've looked at the impacts of the buildings. To say that the city can't rely on a consultant, the city can rely on any evidence presented to it. And Mr. Stone is a well-respected, well-known consultant throughout the state who happens, to your benefit, to live very close by. And he did a thorough analysis, and he concluded that the building is not adversely affected, a very important finding under your ordinance. And he concluded that, on an overall basis, the project meets the Secretary of Interior standards. So we think this is relatively simple, although we do respect the degree of community input and interest. I think in the interest of time, you know, it might be more efficient if we were to answer questions as to what was addressed, rather than trying to anticipate your concerns.
I definitely agree. And I'd just like to open it up to the council to see if they have any further questions, either for the Ojai Valley and the applicants or staff.
Quick question.
Councilmember Wyre.
On the issue in 8A of the recommendation from staff on the monitoring, I did not see anything associated with certification or qualifications on those monitors that are proposed. Just asking. What specifications are normal for? And it was mentioned, and please contradict me, that in '02, there were monitors during that project?
Yes.
And for the Native American and archaeological monitors? I'm just asking, how does one appropriately specify qualifications for that type of personnel?
In my previous job, when I worked with the Native American Heritage Commission up in Sacramento, the way that they advised us, because we had two tribes there, and so the way that they advised us is that it should be an archaeologist knowledgeable in local tribal artifacts culture. That was how those folks up in Sacramento from the state recommended it. And Ojai is traditionally used a Native American monitor. That is not the recommendation that I received from the Native American Heritage Commission. It was always an archaeologist knowledgeable in the tribal, the tribe of the local tribe. And that would mean that if you have more than one, they have to be knowledgeable in both. Now, traditionally, communities like to engage somebody from the tribe because it's, you know, it just shows good faith having them out there. But as Mr. Tuna might explain to you tonight, he's not an archaeologist. Neither am I, and I'm not qualified, and nor is he, to do archaeologists' work. So sometimes you see an archaeologist out there and a tribal member.
Mr. Delvec giving ad to that?
I appreciate the opportunity. We've heard so much about the Secretary of Interior standards. There are indeed secretary standards on preservation, pardon me, professional qualifications. And they specify minimum experience and education. And we would be very comfortable if the condition were amended to say an archaeologist meeting the Secretary of Interior standards for professional qualifications.
Any other questions?
I have a question on the architecture of the change. And when that wall is removed on the outside, on the breezeway, it currently has a, I didn't look at it that closely, but it looks like it's some sort of a glass structure over that breezeway now. Is that, is that correct?
There's a skylight.
Okay. All right. And I am concerned about that expanse with those beams that are there, looking to what's supporting them. So my question is, what's going to happen on the outside of that wall where the current breezeway is? Is there going to be any change to the skylights?
I'm going to defer to, we do have some pictures. Going to ask Mr. Clinger to speak to that. I can hold them up if you want.
Yeah, the picture on the lower left here is a picture of that area with the skylight. You're right, there's a skylight in that area. The intent is, since it's going to be a bar, that that whole roof area will be raised a little bit, and a new roof will be in its place. So the skylight will come out of that area.
So the upper part of that wall, between the lounge and what's going to be in the breezeway, the upper part of that wall will remain where those beams are. And you won't see any beams on the other side where the current breezeway is. Is that correct?
You'll see the beam, it goes across.
In this picture, you'll see, you see the beam continuing across. And in a way, it addresses some of the concerns of removing the wall. It's not like we're taking the wall out, clear to the ceiling. We're leaving a portion of it that comes down that is visually the beam. Even though it's finished in plaster, the beam is in that area, and it physically carries the trusses. I know there was some concern on the Historic Commission that the trusses would look unsupported. But this feature of the building gives the feeling that those trusses that are existing and to remain are well-supported by a structure. And so that's one of the features of this, that kind of carries the, it helps to carry the continuity of the room in a way that I think still preserves it as a space, different from the bar space. So there's a transition that's still visible when you're in the space and when you're transitioning into the space that maintains the continuity of the NEF Lounge.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions, council? Or any further discussion?
Do you have anything else?
No, I was just going to ask for support.
If there's no further discussion, let me say this, and Steve, I know you want to say something as well. We appreciate your time. We appreciate the process. We heard a lot of concerns about due process and the way the procedure works. We, Ojai, have followed the process to the letter. We applied, we appealed, we came before you. We've done our presentation. It's a de novo review. Mr. Crown has come out to talk to you specifically. We've given you as much information as we possibly can. There may be some glitches in the process from the community's perspective, and we certainly appreciate that. We appreciate that all of you came out, whether you're for us or against us on this particular issue. We appreciate that you're here. We heard some things that we'll accommodate. For example, one of the gentlemen talked about the plants. The plants are just plants that an architect put into some drawings right now. Of course, we'll pay attention to those. With regard to the process, when this was originally landmarked, I can tell you that, as staff told you, there was no certified letter. We don't have a copy of the letter. We didn't participate in the process. And I can tell you, not a single member of the Crown family was aware of the process. So we have our own due process concerns, but we're here to ask you, on the merits, to approve what your staff has recommended and what we've asked you to approve. We've compromised where we could compromise, the floors, the fountain, and so forth. So we very much ask for your approval. Mr. Crown?
I guess, from my standpoint, I too want to say thank you to all of you for making this meeting happen when it did. I'd like to thank the folks that came out and spoke both for and against. I think it's a good process. I think it's important for people to air what their concerns are. I think it's important for people to put on the record where they have some issues. And quite honestly, we will listen to issues that we think can be incorporated into what we're doing. On that, on the other side, I think we've done what has been asked of us. We have been, we have applied in appropriate fashion. We have tried to respond to questions. We've tried to be thoughtful. We've tried to be respectful of the history. And quite honestly, if we didn't respect the history, I'm not sure Ojai would be as special to us as it is to all of you. It's an important place. And with that, my family really holds this town and this facility in very, very high regard. And with that, I'd just like to ask for your approval of the plan. We won't disappoint you. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll allow the comment. Please keep it short.
I did make the comment that I'm not a certified archaeologist, but I am a certified Native Chumash representative. It is our culture that I'm trying to protect and perceive as a future for our people and try to protect something that I truly believe in. And because some people here believe and think that they can make judgment and cause our cultural resources that have existed for over 13,000 years is wrong. I'm here to protect what I have, part of my descendancy. And that's my father, my great-grandfather, and people from the island, Santa Cruz Island, that originated from. And that's why I'm here tonight. And I do respect Mr. Crown and their family for allowing us and being participants in any of the work that's been done out there. I have four family members that were employees of the Crowns. Even my mother was an employee of the Crown in the 50s. So I am very aware of what goes on out there. I've been an employee several times at the inn. And so I, you know, I do have an attachment with what they're trying to do there and what exists in this valley. But my main objective here is to preserve what we stand for, and that's archaeological and cultural resources and the ancestry of our people. And I think that just hiring an archaeologist, and I've met many over the fifteen years that I've been involved with archaeology, not every one of them has a clue of what our resources are all about. We do. We have a link. We have a tie to our history and our people. And I'll be damned if I'm going to have somebody else that's not Native Chumash tell us what to do about our cultural resources and our archaeological resources and our future. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Tumaya, for participating. Any further comments? And I just want to make sure if we have, I appreciate the public comment, and I think that we've done really good in just this last one, and then we'll move on to what our decision will be. Thank you.
Thank you. I had requested time for rebuttal at the inn, so I appreciate the opportunity to speak again. And I appreciate the inn's respect for Ojai Valley and their care and concern for cultural resources. But this doesn't change the facts. The inn has asserted that there were no resources found in 2002, but without a guarantee that this project is going to go in the same footprint without any exterior disturbance of the earth, they just cannot guarantee that cultural resources might be impacted for this project. In addition, we heard that they're building new cabanas in the area, so there's going to be new earth-disturbing activities for the project. Second, the city, or excuse me, the inn asserts the proper SEQA analysis was done, and they discuss only the historic resources, being the historic NEF Lounge. Again, no discussion of cultural resources here. And I again remind the city of the public concerns for appropriate environmental concern, or environmental review, which is required by SEQA guidelines. The whole of the record for this project should be considered, and that does include possible significant impacts to cultural resources. My third and final point is the discussion on 8A and the condition of approval for monitoring. The condition of approval that's spelled out by city staff requires both a qualified archaeologist as well as a Native American monitor. I've only heard, in speaking so far in the last three hours, only heard about a Native American monitor. I hadn't heard a discussion of a qualified archaeologist. This is why the language is very important. And again, the requirement for this as a conditional approval is not a substitute for appropriate environmental review under SEQA. That environmental review process allows the public to participate in the process. By granting a categorical exemption, you deny the public that process. A project cannot be exempted from environmental review asserting no environmental impacts and then have conditions of approval on that project to require, to mitigate potential impacts of that project. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And I'll turn it back to council for any further discussion.
Yes, yeah. Thank you.
If you might come up, I forgot your name.
I'm sure you're ready for me to go back to Los Angeles.
No.
I do want to touch on it. The measure 8A is entirely clear. There are two monitors, and it is appropriate to have an archaeological monitor. I'm surprised to hear the assertion that this council wouldn't have the right to employ or impose a condition. Regardless of SEQA, you have every right to request a monitor. They haven't presented, there's been no evidence presented about an archaeological impact. We've presented evidence that it's an area that's been ground disturbed. The sense- The sensible way, even if there were to be further environmental review, all the way to a new EIR, and you and I know you're never gonna do an EIR on this project, the outcome would be this monitor. So it's a common sense matter. In fact, the gentleman who so eloquently spoke about cultural resources, I believe he was the monitor last time. So, the inn has a longstanding track record of making sure that the conditions that are imposed are met or exceeded, and that's what's gonna happen here. So, we appreciate all the concerns, and you guys are blessed to live in a community with really smart, caring people. You've heard really good evidence and testimony tonight. We just respectfully urge that the record is clear that you're in a position to approve this.
And thank you. And I do want to reiterate, I do appreciate all the comments, whether they'll have alley in our commissioners or our public. I think that we have heard a lot of information, almost four hours of this, so I want to turn it back to Council and see if there's any further discussion.
Mr. Mayor, just to be, I'd like to ask you to formally close the public hearing.
And I will formally close the public hearing. Councilmember Wyrick.
Mr. Fletcher, could you speak to the, what amounts to a legal matter regarding conditions on categorical exemption findings and how that relates to environmental impact reviews?
SEQA is an informational process. SEQA is not a standalone entitlement process in and of itself. And the courts over the last particularly 10, 15 years have been much more clear about what the purpose of the SEQA process is, is to inform the decision-maker about the potential environmental impacts of a decision it's going to make. It's not a, it's not a, it's not an entitlement in and of itself. Nothing, as, as Mr. Delvec said, nothing in, in our, in our permanent approval process prevents you from imposing a condition to, to approve it. That doesn't mean, because you're imposing a condition, it doesn't mean that you're ignoring a potential environmental impact, because there's conditions unrelated to those. This could be a statutory requirement. We could probably, if we had, you know, if anyone's talking about this lack of an, of a cultural resource ordinance of some sort, one might be demanded by statute or require that certain kind of projects and certain types of areas shall have an archaeological monitor. So the fact you're choosing to monitor doesn't, is no, in no way an admission that there, that there are potential impacts that are being ignored. And the point I want to make, you know, very clear, and this happens a lot in, in projects like this with a lot of emotion and a lot of feelings, argument is no substitute for evidence. And all the arguments folks have made about the SEQA process here, they've produced, in my opinion, no evidence that there is even a fair argument that there are potential archaeological impacts will be caused by this project. And to the contrary, significant evidence was submitted by the staff as well as the inn regarding the history of the, of the site, that being the potential disturbing site, the, the, the pool area, to it, that there, that there's been prior construction monitored, found no impacts. We've, we have the map, the tribal maps, which indicate this is not a, is not a significant area, no historical sites found in the past. So in the absence of further, further evidence, there's no reason not to approve the categorical exemption.
Any further questions from staff? Any comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. This is a really difficult spot to be in up here, I gotta tell you guys. Because everybody believes real strongly in their, in their position, and each position has real valid points. I cut my teeth on restoration carpentry up in Northern California. I was a rest, I did restoration of Victorian homes. And I, my husband just recently got an award for restoration here in Ojai. So it's something I her, hold very dear to my heart. And I, and I really honor our historic structures. I think they need to be preserved. And sometimes I'm very adamant about that, almost rabid. But recently, I wrote a book, Truman by McCullough. It's thick. It's a tome. But I learned something in that book, that Truman gutted the White House at one point, absolutely gutted it, redid the whole thing. And I've been thinking about that the whole time I've been listening to this. And also realized that every time I worked on a Victorian home or any, any historic structure, my husband just recently did the restoration for the, I can never think of this guy's name. He's the famous architect, the black guy. He could write upside down. Paul Williams, thank you. The Paul Williams house up here. And whenever you get into a historic home, you see that through the decades, things have been changed. Walls have been torn out, walls have been put up, kitchens have been changed, bathrooms have been changed, families have grown, they've added rooms. They're living, breathing beings, entities, these buildings. And they need to adapt to stay vital, which brings me to the very difficult place I am right now with this whole project. I went over and spoke with Mr. Crown and sat in, in the room, and then I went over there again today with my husband. And we stood there for about an hour, and we looked at the building and tried to imagine what was gonna be done. And the rabid part of the, the preservationist in me came out, that I really do believe that the architecture of the Spanish Revival architecture, you're right, they're cozy rooms, they're, they're warm and small windows, and that's the way they're designed. But things change. So I'm, I'm really struggling with this, because I would love to have, had that, had that building never changed, that's, I think, what would have been ideal. It's a shame that was ever changed. I would have liked to have seen the, things evolved differently, but they don't. Things change. They evolve the way they evolved at the time when people felt, feel they need to evolve in that certain way. So I'm really struggling with this decision. I just wanted to let you know that. And I don't think I've quite made it yet. But I want to let you know that it's something that I, I really appreciate both sides of this. And I'm coming from a position of, of really having worked on these historic homes and understand their importance, but also understand the importance of staying vital as a business. And, and, yeah, the, the hotel industry's really a tough one to me in, and you do have to stay vital, you do have to stay vibrant, you do have to, people get bored with you. If you don't change, they get bored, and there's someplace else that they can go. And these people that come and stay at the inn can go anywhere, in a heartbeat, first class. So if we don't have that offered in this, in this, this inn here in our town, I think it is, is a legitimate concern that it will affect the economics of the inn. At the same time, the NEF Lounge is dear to my heart. I don't have an answer.
Any further comments?
I'll go. I, I want to really thank everybody. You know, that's the beauty of Ojai, is the participation we have. And having been on the council for a few years, I tell you, I come into these meetings with an open mind, and I really don't make my mind up until I've had an opportunity to hear everything and see everything, listen to my colleagues. And I, I too met with, with Mr. Crown and spent about an hour with him going over the, the plans. I also was in attendance, and I believe I was the only councilperson in attendance at the Historic Preservation Commission meeting. And I truly appreciate what you do and how you really protect our community. And I have a tremendous desire to protect our community and to preserve our, our history. And because I think when you lose sight of your history, you lose sight of a part of what really makes a community matter. And it's even in Ojai, we're, we're a strange group, because we even will, when we feel like we have been, had history taken away from us, we'll rebuild it. And as, as Dave Masons will remember, we served on the, the pergola committee when we rebuilt the Ojai pergola, which had been torn down. And that had been an integral part early on in, in Mr. Libby's days of, of generating what looks, the look of Ojai. And we reconstructed it, because that was important to us. And I think that many people that have heard me on the campaign trail know how important, I believe, preserving our history is in town. And that I come from a, a small New England town, where history has always been important. And we weren't talking about things that were being built in the 1930s there. I was on a heritage council in which we had to review some renovations that were gonna be done to an old inn called the Old Riverton Inn in Riverton, Connecticut. And that has been a continuously operating inn since 1796. So when you're talking about historic changes to buildings, 1930, to where I grew up, was modern-day architecture. It wasn't, it wasn't even considered historic. But here, it certainly is, and it means a, it means a great deal. This is, this, I struggled with, and I, and I, when I was formulating my ideas for the meeting tonight, I really wanted to put myself back in the day when, when the NEF Lounge or the, the original golf course clubhouse was in existence, and what was, what was Libby's and NEF's intentions of its use, and how was it used? And to me, as, as David Mason indicated, it was, that was the gathering place for Ojai. And I don't think it's a gathering place for Ojai anymore. Its original intent was that it was a gathering place. And it was originally that way, and how has it changed and what is its future use? And I honestly believe that the inn has a concept of future use that puts it more in tune with what it was when it was opened, even though it may change a little bit in its overall look. So where I'm, where I'm trying to get to is historic preservation in my mind is a, is a, is an attitude. It's a, it's an attitude that believes that we truly need to pay attention to historic preservation. But if you pay so much attention to historic preservation, many times what happens is you lose it, because it no longer is functional in the way that it was at a time when it was originally built. Now, I look at, I look at the NEF Lounge, and part of what I'm looking at is what was his original design and what changes have happened? And what is, the, the big significance that I saw from the Historic Preservation Commission was that wall on the south side, because that was an outside wall, and the windows. And quite frankly, the windows, I, I, I think the windows are great just the way they are. But quite frankly, the way that that, that inn is designed now, that wall, to me, distracts from the grandeur of the NEF Lounge. It kinda, I agree that the original Spanish architecture is supposed to be small and cozy, but it, it's not particularly inviting anymore. It's not, it's not the same as it was when the NEF Lounge was there by itself, and you walked out onto a patio to the south and a patio to the north. It's changed, and it's changed because the inn has grown over the years tremendously. The, I don't know what percentage of the footprint of the inn, the NEF Lounge is any longer, but it's not a very substantial percentage. And I'm concerned that I don't want to change the way the NEF Lounge looks, and that's why I struggled with the, with the beams and what it was gonna look like. But I look on these renderings, and there is gonna be a facade which is, even though the floor space may be open, to me, it looks like there still is gonna be a differentiation there between what's out, which would be the breezeway, and what's in the NEF Lounge. And it becomes so much more functional. And to me, preserving, preserving that space and giving it some life is truly part of historic preservation. And if somebody came in and said we were gonna take down those beams and, you know, whatever else was gonna happen to that room, I'd be on the side saying, absolutely not. But I see a real beauty of history, even with that wall out of there. As far as the categorical exemption, I think there's enough evidence we can, we can do it, but I would, as far, I would add the condition that not only do we have to have Native American Schumash there monitoring, but if it's feasible to have an architect there, I would also, or an archaeologist, I think that that's what I would recommend as well. And I, I think that's really my thoughts.
And I think it is that way on the staff report, as I read it before. Any other, any other comments from Council?
Full disclosure, I have experience with these difficult decisions. I sat on a Historic Preservation Committee, Commission for over 10 years, and the, I am struggling, I struggled as well with this. I, I also, just full disclosure, Councilman Blas, I, I watched the entire video. I was there in spirit. I watched every minute. Actually, watched a couple parts over again, because it is something that, that I, I think is vitally important. But I want to, you know, it, it, as I, as I think through this, I think it's important, at least the things that resonated with me. When you look at the original plans, this lounge was a, it was a lounge and a dining, the NEF Lounge was not a NEF Lounge. The NEF Lounge was a lounge area and a dining area. The, and it was, you know, it was meant to be pretty much of a seamless, you know, it was, there was nothing in between the, in terms of the, the division within that, those two functions, within that original construction. And so we now have a larger facility, and we have, I'm sort of conceiving this, is we, we have a dining area that is now not integrated with the lounge area on a larger scale. And basically, what I see is an attempt to try an adaptive reuse that accomplishes that. I've been to the NEF Lounge several times recently, because of my interest in this, and there isn't a lot of activity in that area. And I think that what's interesting to me is that with the restoration of the ceiling, and I, that's one thing that I would be very keen to stipulate, is that, that that's, that restoration of that ceiling be so stipulated, it's not currently in the, in the resolution, that with that stipulation of that restoration, that creates, I think, arguably even a better sense of space than there is there now, regard to the lounge function integrating with the dining function on a larger scale that reflects the original functional design. So I struggle with this as well, and then, but, you know, looking at everything on balance, I think some stipulations about the, the monitoring, the Secretary of Interior Standards for the archaeological issue, the interpretive plan, not contingent on a certificate occupancy, but nevertheless, an important part of the stipulations. I'm kind, that's where I'm leaning. And just wanted to say that this is one of the things that's absolutely commendable about this community. You gentlemen that have, don't come here all the time, this is a standard that we live with all the time. It's really quite, absolutely, it's quite something. The level of discussion that we get into, so it's something that, yeah, we're used to. But thank you, everybody, again.
Councilmember Haney, do you have any further comments?
Okay, it's 10, almost 10, 10, so I'll keep mine brief. First of all, I'd like to thank, Don, I'd like to thank you for all the work and your, is it due diligence. and your due diligence, really thorough, really thorough. And the commissioners, I can see your passion. I understand completely where you're coming from. And I really respect that. It's honest, it's sincere, and it's meaningful. I'd like to say thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to work my ass off this weekend. Because I obviously had nothing better to do, but I did a lot of reading, and I did a lot of research. And I know more about CEQA, and I know more about historical Secretary of Interior standards and guidelines than I ever thought I'd have to. So I just want to say thank you. Thank you for making me grow and become a better councilperson, so thank you. I'm going to go into the lines with Bill Miley, and what he was saying about, in fact, my wife has a great line. I'll try and quote her, and then I'll come home tonight and she'll yell at me saying I quoted it wrong. But, "You're either in a state of living or you're in a state of dying. It's that simple." And I think the true intent of this inn and this spa, and originally this golf course clubhouse, was to be in a state of living. And I believe that was the intent. And over the years, we have watched it live. We have watched it grow, we've watched it change, we've watched it mature. And it's going to continue to do that long past our lives up here. So I see that, and I have a sense of that. And so that part of me says that what you're trying to do and what you're trying to achieve, and the fact that you've been doing it in this community for 50 years, your intentions are above approach. And I think you're going to do an excellent job, and I stand behind you. And I stand, again, behind you because I see this facility and its needs has to grow. It has to become something better than what it is today. And hopefully, in the future, you'll be before this council again, asking to grow and change again. So thank you.
And I, again, am so grateful for everybody's comments. I really do appreciate the commissioners coming out and stating their findings. Very important for us to take into consideration. And I do want to thank you guys for putting up with the way I decided to facilitate this meeting, because I thought it was really important to hear everybody's opinions, concerns, data, research, so forth. I too struggled with this decision. No, there's no surprise to it. The Neff Lounge, it is a landmark here in Ojai. And it is a facility that we need to respect. And I too realize that taking down that wall, it is going to change the interior of that building as it stands. Not only for how it was built, but it is completely going to change the feel of it, how you go in, what it's perceived. But I do agree with my fellow councilmembers that that Neff Lounge was there to enjoy, to come in and socialize. And I go in, I've never been in there. I've walked through, I've gone to the restaurants. I've never thought that it was an actual space that you could go and enjoy. So I do, in a way, it's sad, because it's, we're not appreciating that historical landmark that we have here in our valley. And I've come into this in an open mindset about what's going to happen, what are people going to bring up? And I've thought about possibly offering some alternative conditions or renegotiation, possibly with Ojai Valley Inn, and to try to make that place livable. But looking at all the language, looking at all the vague research that we have on what is a feature and what's not a feature. Going from the Phase II resource report, going from the CEQA, et cetera. I think that this is possibly the right decision for us to make. It's, we need that lounge to be enjoyed by the public. And I think that somebody that's, that is fairly young, not too young, does appreciate the fact that things have to evolve. And at the same time, as I've been learning these two years being on the council, it is important to keep some of your historical landmark. And I think the way that it's laid out, we do know that there's certain features that have been there. And I think that the commission has pointed those out, and the Ojai Valley Inn has pointed those out, decided to agree with certain ones that they've agreed, not absolutely all of them. But I think that we do need to consider seriously what the modifications are and what the studies have been from previous historians. So I think that's my position, and I would entertain anybody's motion.
Could I ask just a point of information for staff?
Yes.
On how to go about this. I mentioned the three things that I think need to be included. The Secretary of Interior standards for the architectural monitor. There being architectural monitor and a Native American monitor. The fact-
You mean archaeological?
Archaeological.
Okay.
Excuse me.
That's fine.
Thank, it's late, and, sorry. Also, Point 9, the interpretive plan should be completed and approved prior to the issuance of building permits.
Yeah, we'd like-
That should be, I think we all agree that that may be prior to final occupancy approval, but not prior to the issuance of building permits?
Correct.
And then the issue of stipulating that the West End ceiling restoration would occur that's not in the current applicant's package?
I'm not sure exactly if that's clear enough, because I'm not sure what you mean by restoration. I thought that the, I thought that-
Right there. The, not the West End, but the former dining area.
Can I interject something real quickly?
I just, I'm asking, I'm sorry.
My understanding is that's original, and that they were originally going to change it, but now they realized, after looking at the drawings, that that's original.
Yes.
So there, I thought the dry, I thought right now the drywall extends to the bottom of those? It does not, that's how it looks now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I stand corrected. How do we go about, if we're talking about making motions, adding some of these additional issues, stipulations?
Mr. Helsmer Wirick here, I'll take it. What you can do simply is, for example, I think both of those changes are in Exhibit B, which is the design review permit resolution.
I'm looking at Attachment B right now.
Yeah, Attachment B. If you were to want to offer that resolution with those changes, it would be so, that could be then voted upon. If you just say, just offer it as recommended with the changes you just discussed, we can put that language in the revised resolution.
You got that?
I think so. So I'll make a motion that we approve. Should I title the whole thing?
Actually, the new one.
Which one is the new?
These are the ones that were placed on the dais tonight. So don't look at the ones in your packet.
Don't look at the ones in the packet, okay. And so this would be the one right here?
Correct.
Okay. Motion to approve a resolution of the City Council of the City of Ojai for approval of a revised design review permit, DRP 14-18, at the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa for renovations to historic landmark number nine, Neff Lounge, May Lobby and Pool Area, located at 905 Country Club Road, Assessor's Parcel Number 024-0-010-110, with amendments to Number 8, stipulating that both Native American and archaeological monitors will be present on site during all grading operations, and that they will meet Department of Interior standards.
Yes.
And Number 9 amended to say that the interpretive, the public display or other suitable interpretive approaches approved by the city shall be installed, shall be completed and approved prior to the issuance of building permits. Would that be amended to say completed and approved prior to final occupancy approval? Is that-
Correct, you got it.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Blatz?
Yes.
Wirick, oh, sorry. Clapp? Wirick?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Number 2.
Number 2, now we have a closed session.
Another resolution?
Why don't I give the honor of this to someone else? This is the-
Is this a-
I have to read that.
Correct, that one.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion.
Yep.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Ojai for approval of a work permit, WP 14-01, at the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa for renovations to historic landmark number nine, Neff Lodge Lounge, located at 905 Country Club Road, Assessor's Parcel Number 024-0-010-110.
For a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Blatz?
Yes.
Clapp? Wirick?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
On our agenda is a closed session conference with the legal counsel. One case, Government Code Section 54956.9 subsection D4. If you-
Excuse me.
We're still in a meeting. Apologize, if you guys could please take it into the quarters. Thank you, guys. Is there any expected report?
We might have a report out.
I'm going to try to-
I think we did what's right.
I agree.
It's a difficult decision. But to me, the guiding principle was that the original design was a common system, was making the dining and the lounge area connected to one another. And this is basically connecting lounge and dining area.
The minute they took the south wall and started, and started building on it, they changed the integrity of that structure.